Ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order for this evening, June 3rd, 2019. As always, always glad to see each of you here tonight and always welcome you to come back. I wish more folks would attend our city council meetings, but we can't make them come, but we wish they would come to get involved with what we do here in the city. But maybe the meetings are running too long, so they don't tend to come, but hopefully tonight, this meeting will not last nearly as long as the first four or five have.[54.19][54.19](Laughter). So hopefully we'll work through this agenda. Have a lot of public hearings tonight on different ordinances, on their second readings that involve a public hearing. So mostly, that's what the agenda is made up tonight of, is ordinances and public hearings and things of that type. I would ask anyone here tonight, I always like to remind you, if you have a cellphone, if you might put it on vibrate or turn it off, or if you need to use it, please step out. We don't mind you getting up and removing yourself if you'd like to speak on the phone, but always at this time, I always like to have everyone stand for our pledge of allegiance. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for tonight's meeting, please?
Trey.
Here.
Mary.
Here.
Leslie.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
Andrea.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
Debbie.
Here.
Elsie.
Maybe.
Say maybe?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm not quite unloaded yet.
Okay. We do have our quorum, so at this time, I'll call the meeting to order. You have before you tonight, a agenda. I would like for each of you to look at the agenda that we have tonight and would ask for a motion to approve, add to, delete. If anyone has anything that has come about that you would like to try to see inserted into the agenda, you're welcome to at this point. I do have one item that I would like to add into the agenda. I'll do it after item 16, I'd like to put it there, and it's a need to go into executive closed session for the discussion under chapter 61, 810, for old closed meetings, and it will be for the deliberation of future acquisition or sale of real property by a public agency. So I would like to add a short closed session meeting tonight after item 16, if I could, and have that inserted into the agenda. So that's the addition I would like to place into the agenda. Anyone else like to add anything at this time?
Motion to approve agenda, Mayor.
Motion made by Councilman Davenport, second by Council Lady Leslie Wright. Any discussion on the motion? If not, others in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you so much. As always, the minutes for this, our last meeting, have been sent to you. I think you received all the packet last Thursday, so without further delay in reading through this long list of minutes, I would ask that we dispose of the reading of the entire minutes, but if any council wishes to take a moment to look at anything and try to see if there's a correction to or add to it, you're welcome to do so at this time. Are there any additions or corrections that anyone wishes to bring to the attention of the full council?
Motion to approve the minutes, Mayor.
Second.
Motion made by Mayor Davenport, ex-Mayor Davenport, second by Debbie Pollard. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, others in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay? You have before you our payables for May of 2019. These may, payables have come to you in your pockets, and if there's any questions or concerns or anything anyone like to ask in relation to any of the payables, have Stephanie here tonight, as well as Heather Woodcox, who's sitting in our audience, and she takes care of all these for our city administration. And does anyone have any questions or points of interest on any of the payables to be paid?
Mayor, I wasn't familiar with Carter Waters. I know it's probably Public Works I saw back here, but I wasn't sure what, I'm not familiar with that company, is that a company or?
Who's, who are you referring to?
Carter Waters.
Carter Waters. Under Public Works, it's about the eighth or ninth item down, folks, it's 23.
Who is? Was that concrete? I figured it might be. Okay, good, yeah. I figured that's what it was, because I saw a lot of concrete.
Can you repeat, Heather, please, what you just reported to Councilperson Davenport, please?
Construction equipment for concrete to do the sidewalk repair.
Corrick, your Public Works Director, anything you'd like to add to what Heather has spoken to about the Carter Waters and how that, how that money's being utilized? Any, other than sidewalks, is it, I guess you might elaborate on it a little bit, possibly?
Yes. That is, we get some of our ADA, detectable warning devices through them, as well as, we just got some new forms for concrete.
The sidewalk concrete forms, the form of sidewalks, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, to get most of our concrete supplies.
Okay. All right. I think that answers the question. Any other questions about any of the payables tonight?
I wasn't questioning the amount, I just quit, I didn't, I wasn't familiar with.
It used to be CMA. They changed the name, that's why.
All right.
Yeah. About a year ago, I guess, something like that.
Okay. Appreciate it, thank you.
No further questions, entertain a motion that the payables be allowed to be approved and paid. Is there a motion? Motion made by Debbie Pollard, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davenport. Any discussion on the motion? If not, others in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Tonight, you also have a financial report. It basically shows the status of all departments, where we are within the year. Just trying to get to June 30th, the best that we can, and we're going to make it, and just trying to hold tight and see how we finish up years in. Feel like the committee that put this budget together so far has done an excellent job previously to formulate this budget that we're working within, and hopefully at years in, we hope to have a, still hoping for a somewhat of a small carryover cash balance. So that's, that's always good in any city administration. Any questions on any of the financials? Continue to look at them, the statement of revenue and expenditures, what I'm looking at at the moment. It's all your different categories of expenses within the different departments, so if you have questions there, then also in your investment in your bank accounts. We have a number of different investment in different banks here in the city, and we continue to stay strong in most of those categories, and that's always good, especially at years in when we're not trying to, having to call on those accounts to help us finish funding the years in different departments. Does all the city council feel comfortable with what you have before you? If so, I'll entertain a motion that our financial reports be approved as presented.
Motion to approve reports as presented, please.
Okay, motion made by Leslie Wright, second by Andrea Essen Price.
Perfect.
Cool. Essen Price, any discussion on the motion before you?
Essen Price.
If not, others in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you so much. See how fast we're going, folks? We're going to be out here by 7:00.
Yeah, right.
Okay, all right. As always, we always welcome and hear from our Main Street Report. Looks like we have Karen Eldridge here tonight.
Public comment, Mayor.
I'm sorry, they want public comment before this, so I'm sorry I skipped over an item, and so at this point in time, it's always an opportunity for anyone sitting here tonight, you're always welcome to come up and speak to the city council. We always give you a first four minutes to pretty much say about anything you'd like to say to us within guidelines, but does anyone here tonight want to come up and say hello to the city council about any issue during our public comment time? No one being seen, so thank you for that. Okay, let's move on now to our LaGrange Main Street Report, and see Karen Eldridge is here, and she also has a companion with her tonight. Aye.
Thank you so much. We have printer problems, so I don't have a printed report for you, but I brought the most important thing with me.
Phew, that's a lot of pressure.
This is Sandy Folk, she is our new Main Street Director. We, she will actually start in June 17th.
17th.
17th will be her official day, so between now and then, we'll get to have, make sure she gets in to see everybody, but I just wanted to tell you a couple of things about herself and how she ended up in LaGrange.
Oh my goodness. That's the crazy story. So I actually lived in LaGrange.
Come up and speak right in there, Sandy, and so everybody at home.
Because I'm real shy, so you won't be able to hear me.
You want everyone at home and everywhere to see you and hear you.
Well, I actually married an Oldham County boy, I'm originally from a little town called Ashton, Idaho, that's about 1,100 people. Married an Oldham County boy, moved here, lived in LaGrange out by Max Lake for about six years, then went back home to Idaho, and we decided when we retired, we were coming back to LaGrange. So here I am, been here almost a year now, and met Karen and said, "How can I be more involved? Love LaGrange." We decided this is where we want to spend the rest of our lives. What can I do to help? And here I am. So, so it's kind of turned into an opportunity that I just couldn't, I couldn't resist. So I'm just pleased to be here. I've been in marketing, in sales management for a radio group in Idaho, and in marketing and promotions since 2000, since we moved back to Idaho from here. Worked at Kentucky Center for the Arts for seven years prior to that when we were here in Kentucky, so I'm just looking forward to seeing what I can do to help and make LaGrange famous, more famous, I should say. And I've got a great, great partner in crime right here, so, so I look forward to it.
Do you know most of our city council?
I don't.
Do you know any of them?
I see, I see familiar faces, but I'm still learning to put names with faces, so.
Hey, why don't you tell, tell them who you are and where you live, city council, so she'll get an understanding where you live throughout the city, and maybe she might relate to that. Trey, where do you?
You want me to start, or you want ladies, ladies first?
Men first.
Okay. Trey Kammer, this is my third term on city council. I live on 4th Street, kind of halfway down the way, so that's where I'm at. Good to meet you, and welcome.
I am Mary Bolton, and I live on West Main Street, and this is my first term on council. It's great to meet you.
Leslie Wright, I live out in the reserve at Lesbury, Little Island, in the, within the city limits of LaGrange, and this is my very first term on council, and welcome, look forward to working with you. Thank you.
I'm Joe Davenport. I've been in LaGrange 40 years. I came to LaGrange with the Kroger Company. I kept meeting LaGrange Kroger for 32 years, and I was on city council for 19 years. I became mayor for the term of 2015. I just came out of the mayor's office in December and was reelected back to city council. So I'm starting in my 23rd year of service to LaGrange, and I love the city. And welcome.
Thank you, it's a great place to live. You know better than us, huh? I know you, you're trouble, I know.
You know Stephanie?
No, she hasn't got to be Stephanie yet. I'm Stephanie Cooper, I'm the city clerk. I've been here for, hmm, 13 years? No, 15 years. 15. Nice to meet you.
Well, I hope to be seeing you a lot. I'm Andrea Essen Price. I own Q&amp;A Sweet Treats Bakery right here in town.
Oh, you'll see me a lot.
So we, we do work with Main Street a lot. We consider ourselves fortunate to be part of that community, and, and we're also in the farmer's market, so if you work with them at all, and this is my first term, and I live back in the courts on Birch Avenue, so it's so nice to meet you.
We've met.
We have.
I'm welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I'm Debbie Pollard, I met you at the Trackside, and I've been on the council for a while, and look forward to working with you.
And I'm We the People. I live on Main Street, and come sit on the porch anytime, we have music out there every Saturday and Friday nights, so.
Okay, so you know all of your city council folks, and they know you, put a name with the face, so welcome aboard and.
Thank you. I can't wait.
I agree with that.
So the only thing that we have to really report and talk to you about is remember the farmer's market every Saturday morning, and also Trackside Tunes will be on the 21st, we're going to have Hot Brown SmackDown this, this time. They're, they call themselves Jamgrass, so they're a little bit of everything. That's also the same night as the History Center Gala, but you can call the History Center if you'd like to get tickets for that, and your report will be emailed to you this, before the Friday.
What night is the gala, please?
It's on June 21st, it's on a Friday night.
And we're recognizing who for their efforts?
Dwayne and Ann Murner are going to be, and it's going to be a masquerade ball, so come and dress up and be fun. But yes, the Murners have been so, such a big part of the community, so they're the ones honored this year.
Okay. Thank you so much, and thank you, Sandy. Anyone have any issues, concerns for either of these ladies before us tonight? I'll tell you a little story from the weekend.
Oh, yeah.
I bought an item during the Arts on the Green, which was absolutely fabulous the last couple of days in our city, but a lady who I bought one item from, it was on 2nd Street, she travels to University of Cincinnati to see her sick child, I think in a children's hospital there, she's from Franklin, Tennessee, and got to talking to her, and she actually went on to tell me that if there's ever a town she's been, that feels like, feels so much like Franklin, Tennessee, it's the city of LaGrange. And if anybody's ever been to Franklin, it's the coolest town, history in that city, just doing so well, and she actually told me, you know, I told her I was the mayor, she said, "You know, we're thinking about relocating, and we're into horses, we like the horse country," and, and she's coming back here on Jan, June the 22nd to bring one of her, two of her children here, because they want to go overnight to stay somewhere, and she's going to stay here in LaGrange. Can you believe that?
Oh, that's crazy.
So such a nice lady, and if we can be like Franklin, Tennessee, that'd be awfully cool. So.
That reminds me, though, we, I've not put this out there yet, but we're going to, Hot Rod Tours, they go through all over the country, and they'll be at the Kentucky Speedway on the 11th, and they plan on at least some of them coming through here, so you might see, they have 4,000 to 5,000 cars. I don't think we'll have that many come, but they, they have already talked about, because of the trains, that they have already talked about wanting to come here, and I'm working with our local club to see if maybe we can have something special, and we'll keep you posted on that for them. But yes, the, things like the Arts on the Green, it is a wonderful way for us to do economic development. We hopefully may have sold a building from that, we're working on them very closely, so, from someone who loves coming to the art show every year, so. All right, anything else?
Sandy, thank you very much, and you start, when do you actually start officially?
What is the date?
The 17th, that's on, that's on the Monday.
On the Monday, it's on the Monday, so that's the 17th.
Okay.
But we'll be around.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Anytime.
Thank you for visiting with us tonight. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, at this time, we have a LaGrange Utilities Report, you have that in your pocket. Ted Chisholm is here tonight. Council Lady Elsie Carter sits on the Utility Commission. She is to be the liaison from the city council to the commission, and you have your current financials from the city utility commission. Is there anyone who would like to ask any questions of Mr. Chisholm about the financials that he's sent to us, and we have forwarded those into each of y'all's pockets?
I'd like to say that I think that Ted's doing a very good job, he works very hard, he fights good, too. If you have an argument with him, he'll stand right there and tell you exactly how it is, and it's good. Yeah.
Ted, if you would, would you come up for just a moment, please?
I don't think he can talk. No, he doesn't, he's good.
You don't go to box and fight the gun?
Ted, I did speak to you last few days, last week or something, about an issue, or it's not the first time I've heard it, but I would like you to speak to the general public on the issue that I've heard about somewhat, not to say it's, it's your problem or our, whose problem it is, but it may be the residential homeowners problem, but I do have a concern from folks in Cherrywood subdivision that tend to think that their water pressure is extremely high, in terms of pressure coming into their subdivision, thus, it could be causing some issues with different components within their own housing. I don't know if it's the water heater, maybe they had to put pressure relief valves on, but could you speak to that in terms of elevated water pressure, if there is such a thing?
Well, the first, first thing we got, Mayor, is if anyone, if anybody calls y'all with a pressure problem or any problem that got to do with the utility company, we need an address, because we can't research it. I can't go out there and research hundreds of homes if I don't have no address to research on.
I left you messages where this fellow was and what his name was and everything.
Didn't come to me, sir.
Excuse me?
Didn't come to my email.
Well, did, have I talked to you on the phone about it?
No, sir.
Well, I've talked to you about it.
No, sir, you sent me an email on it.
Well, okay.
But you didn't give me no address. I asked you for an address on May the 27th.
Name's Rick Sturgill, and maybe you can go to your database and find him in Cherrywood and find out where his address is.
You know, and that's, that's all I'm asking, because there, we have changed nothing since, the only thing that elevated water pressure can be caused, it can be a line break, but if it's a line break and we have to shut the pressure down, if it hits 20 PSI, then we got to do boiled water. We haven't had any boiled water, we've had a few small leaks, which is not going to hurt the water pressure. Our tank was built in 2006, and as you can see here, we run consistent between 56 and 58 PSI, it's not going to, it's consistent, it's since 2006. If they're having problems now, it's not because that we're changing the elevation on the tank any at all. The tank was built because so many places didn't have good water pressure, and that's the reason the tank was built in 2006, to, so that places like Prestwick and all could have good water pressure. You'll see between 56 and 58, our tank runs consistent on this graph between, because our SCADA graphs all this out for us, and we can locate it at any time, it stays consistent. And also, you know, they, they're talking about the water pressure by statute, by statute, the water pressure that says, by statute, as long as I don't drop below 30 PSI or go over 150 PSI, I'm with the standard by statute right here. So, and, and the, out there, the fire department does a hydrant test every year, the highest pressure out there that's consistent is 111 PSI in Cherrywood, and that's at 2016 Cherrywood Drive, it's the highest PSI that they've got in Cherrywood. Some of the things that's happening is the old setters that the meters in, used to didn't have check valves. Now by the standards, we have to put in setters with check valves. Used to be if your hot water heater got to expand in with pressure, it went back into LaGrange's system, it didn't build up in the house. Now that the people, when they do their plumbing, they're supposed to put expansion tanks on. If we put in a new setter that's got a check valve in it, we leave a letter that says now you need to put expansion tank on your system, because that pressure can't back up into LaGrange Utilities anymore. It can't do it. So if they're not, if their expansion tanks has never been set, which most people don't know, that the expansion tanks has to be set. So that expansion tank's got to be set to the pressure going into their houses at that time, or you just might as well not even put it on, because it don't work. And a water heater creates pressure that used to get back in LaGrange's system, it can't anymore, it can't do it. And, and then another thing is water softeners. Water softer, if it's not, if they're not serviced regularly, they will create a fluctuation in pressure. That's another thing, if people say, "Has these water softeners?" They don't think they ever need service. A whole lot of people tells us that they never serviced them in their life, and sometimes that valve on a water softer will cut their water completely off. And, you know, and that's, the flow test that the fire department does says that we're running consistent. If they've got a problem, they need to call, and I could even data log it to see what their pressure's doing in their house, because I can put it, I can, I'll have to give them water for a couple of days, but I could put a data logger on it and tell them what their pressure in their house is actually doing, that it'll print it out to say what they're doing, and that's the reason I said the address is so critical, that I know addresses, so that we can go to these residents and we can actually investigate it and see what, see what the problem is, because I can't go out there and start through 100 or 200 or 300 homes and do every house. You know, if it's a certain area, if it's a lower area, it might have a little more pressure than the higher plane areas, but other than that, Mayor, you know, like I say, we're running consistent. If, if we was fluctuating down here from 50 pounds and coming up to 60 pounds, I'd say yes, but our tank is staying consistent since 2006, when it was set in 2006 between 56 and 58 PSI in our tank. And we haven't changed any lines, the only line that's been changed, we built a line from Zell Smith Tank to Summit Parks, and that's only new water line that's been built in several years in this city, but that don't, that didn't create the pressure to go any higher, because we didn't change no elevation on our height in our tank.
Okay.
Then what was that gentleman's name again?
Rick Sturgill, and he was told to call myself by the homeowner association president, Adam Bayer. I'm sure you've probably talked to Adam about this issue in the last number of years.
Nope.
Anyway, Adam supposedly put out a email blast to every resident in Cherrywood talking about this issue, so maybe you could get with Adam Bayer, who's the president of the homeowner association, and at least discuss with this as to what you feel is the situation, so he can convey that onto his residents in, in his monthly newsletter.
It's not, you know, as statute, as long as we're on 150 PSI, LaGrange Utilities can't do anything.
As long as he understands what your, what your position is on it, and your, your charts aren't showing anything unusual.
No. We can go by.
Could you, could you explain how the expansion tank works?
Yes, sir. By all plumbing code now, when a new home is built, it's supposed to have expansion tank now. How many of you have an expansion tank? Okay? Expansion tank's put on there, it's got a bladder in it. All it is, is a rubber bladder inside a metal osement. It's put on there, then you have to test the pressure on your house, your incoming pressure on your house, then you have to set your tank, if it's at 50 PSI, 60 PSI, 70 PSI, whatever it is, it's supposed to be set at your incoming pressure, then it don't want to push the water anyplace. Then if your water heater is overheating, then that expansion tank takes care of that extra pressure. It's got that room in there to take care of the extra pressure, and then if you got, if you got some fluctuation pressure, that when you turn your faucet on, your water hits out like that, and then it comes back to regular pressure, your expansion tank's not doing its job. And if anybody wants to check them, all you have to do is go up, put that little air valve on it, push it, if water comes out, the bladder's busted in it, it's not serving any purpose whatsoever, and then that says that you need a new one.
That's going to be, is that something a plumber would do, or is that something a homeowner can do?
That's actually put into plumbing code now, when a new house is built, all those in Cherrywood should have the expansion tank on them, but how many of them has checked them to see if the bladder's busted? We, we don't, we don't go in homes.
And generally, what years are, do you find that on equipment, home?
That's, that's been for several years in plumbing code now, for several years. I'd have to go research it, but that's been several years, and now that any time that we change out, which we changed out a bunch and put in resetters, and our resetters actually has check valves in them, and we actually left a letter at every house, that now you could need expansion tank, because now this water is stopped at the setter now, and it can't get back into LaGrange Utility System whatsoever, and it used to could, but we put in all these automatic reads, a whole lot of them, we had to put in resetters to build it up where we could get the, get it automatically reading everything in. Well, all be resetters, but state standards now. Well, all the resetters, but state standards now has to have a check valve in it. And that's to create so that you will not have a cross connection so they can actually send contaminated water from their house back into the whole system and maybe contaminate the whole system.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
No, sir. You've answered it very thoroughly, Ted. Thank you.
Hang in there, kid. He hates me.
Okay. You've heard the LaGrange Utilities report. Is there a motion to approve the report?
No move.
Second by Elsie Carter, second by Debbie Pollard. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, let me know. I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, let's start with some public hearings. And Beach, Mr. Cregmile, if you would speak into your microphone, please, so everyone could hear you up and down the line, please.
Don't call me Mr. Cregmile. That was my father.
Well, okay.
But...
Council Cregmile, if you would, I'd like to go ahead and have a public hearing and a second reading on ordinance relating to 8-219, ordinance relating to short-term rental property.
Okay. This is the second reading of ordinance number eight, series 2019, an ordinance relating to short-term rental property, which was introduced by Councilman Davenport on May 6, 2019. This is an ordinance where the City Council has found that there is a valid need to identify all short-term rental properties operating within the city in order to regulate those rental activities for public health and safety and welfare, and to collect a reasonable fee from the owners or operators of the short-term rental properties for the privilege of doing business and benefiting from the public services in the city of LaGrange. And this is the ordinance as it was amended at the last meeting on May 6, deleting section six from the draft. And so, that's the reading and summary of ordinance eight for the short-term rental property, Your Honor.
Davenport, you'd like to make a motion, go into public hearing?
Normally, we make a motion to approve and a second to...
You want to do that, and then we'll go into the public hearing?
Yeah, make a motion to approve ordinance eight, series 219, ordinance relating to short-term rental property.
Is there a second to that? And is that including going into public hearing as well?
Well, normally, the procedure is we make a motion and second it, and then we make a motion that opens the discussion up.
Okay.
And then we make a motion to go into public hearing.
Okay. You have a motion. Do we have a second to support Mayor Davenport's motion to approve the second reading of this ordinance?
Mayor, I'll make a second.
Second by Councilman Lambline.
I'll make a motion, we're going to public hearing.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Debbie.
Second by Debbie. Motion made by Joe. All those in favor of going into the public hearing, let me know. I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Okay, with the public hearing, I would like to go ahead and ask staff to come forward, please, and please refresh the memories of the councilmen and ladies on the ordinance itself and see perhaps if they have any questions for you, and if you would, state your name for us.
Stephanie Winter, co-enforcement officer with the City of LaGrange. The short-term rental property registration, back in the early part of 2018, Oldham County passed the short-term property rental registration, short-term. And at that time, the City Council decided they wanted to be able to monitor their own short-term rentals within the city, so they opted out of participating or having the county monitor their short-term rentals. So, all we have done here is exactly what the county's doing. We're requiring the people to do the same process as the county does as far as how you get your registration. The form that I put in front of you, it's a three-page form. That's the exact same form that the county uses. We just put our little letterhead on it. Thank you, county, for letting us use your forms. So, it's the exact same thing they're doing. This way, we can collect the fees ourselves. This way, we can monitor what goes on in our city. On this, one of the things that was talked about before was, do we also charge them a business license to do that? We will roll that into this fee for short-term rentals. So, if you have a short-term rental for like an Airbnb, you don't need to get a separate business license. That will be included in this. That way, it's not an extra fee that we're charging. And I looked today, and currently, we just have three Airbnbs right now. There's one in Old Anita Springs, and there's two in Glen Eagles. That kind of fluctuates. We get on there. We had a couple in Woodland Lakes before the Derby. They're gone now, but, so that's what this form is for.
How much is it going to be to...
For this one, there is a, the original registration fee for the initial application's $150. There's an annual renewal of $100.
Is that what the county does?
Exactly what the county charges, yes. Same fees as the county charges.
What will be done with those fees? Like, where will they go? What fund will they go into?
As it goes now, I think we'll just go into general fund.
$150 to start with, runs for one year, and then it's a $100 renewal, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Do we have some idea at this time, how many of these particular properties are inside the city of LaGrange?
Right now, I could only find three. I think the most I've found at a certain time has been five, so it's been pretty small.
Is this also including any properties on vrbo.com vacation?
I looked at those, too. Yes, yes.
Any other questions for staff at this moment about what will take place once this ordinance is enacted?
One thing I'd like to point out in drafting was the enforcement section is that if she finds a business that's not registered, she has her own, Stephanie has her own procedures into writing notices of violation, and then it will go before the Code Enforcement Board. If a person refuses to register, they can go before the Code Board. And then if she denies a registration for one reason or the other, then their appeal is to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals of LaGrange. So, there's your quasi-judicial administrative remedies in the event that people ignore this requirement.
Any other questions of staff by the City Council this time? Not, we'll go ahead and move on into the public hearing. Staff has presented her case from the code side of the issue. Is there anyone here tonight to support this ordinance that would like to come up and speak on behalf of the ordinance itself? Okay. Is anyone here tonight would like to come up and speak in opposition to this ordinance? Please, if you would, just give us your name, your address, and you know how...
My name's Donald Endress. I live at 501 Fifth Avenue, and I'm concerned about this as a short-term rental of the dining car of the Ohio Valley Railroad Historical Foundation. Our income is so little from it that $100, $150, $100 a year is not worthwhile for us to even rent.
Wait a minute.
We may rent one or two times a year for $100 or so.
We're not talking about renting space to have a party in a train car, are we, Stephanie? We're talking about Airbnb...
That's what I understand, for rental property, short-term rental.
Excuse me? I don't think it's renting out places such as the community center or facilities in the city. I think it's more or less, or is it, Stephanie?
I don't read it that way. I mean, it's not read that way. It's definitely for boarding houses, those types of, or, you know, not, those types of establishments where you spend the night.
So, that would not affect our renovation, though?
No.
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 You know, if someone's got a venue in town, they want to rent it out for a party on Saturday night, as long as they invite us, we're not going to say nothing about it. But otherwise, no, this is not applicable to that item, I would not think.
No.
Thank you for talking.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anyone else want to speak in opposition to the ordinance before them? Typically, we have a closing statement by the applicant, but you probably don't need to say anything else further, do you? Closing statement by the opposition. Okay? He says he has none, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Make a motion, we'll go out of public hearing.
Motion make, out of public hearing. Is all those in favor of the motion, let me know. I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Council, your decision. We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance before you. Any discussion on the motion?
Judge, we do have a little conflict, I think. In here, it says in the second paragraph, "for the privilege of doing business and benefiting from the public services in the city of LaGrange" is why we're doing this. And don't all these places pay property taxes on their property? I mean, surely, use the roads and things like that, but...
What's your question?
My question is, why does it say, "for the privilege of doing business and benefiting from the public services in the city of LaGrange"? They're already paying for that in their home taxes, property taxes.
Well, we're certainly glad they're here, honoring them and the privilege to do business with us, and we hope that they would bring more of them. And also, while they're here and their customers are benefiting from, we hope, our public services who are making our town clean, sweeping the streets, protecting them with public law enforcement, just the necessary things that we're trying to do to make it an accommodating city to actually have these things. And I think all of us realize that we know one of us in the works right now to make it an Airbnb, because I think they think it'd be a profitable idea to let people come here and stay overnight and outside of an actual hotel.
I'm objecting to the wording, is what I'm objecting to.
Well, you know, I'm sure if you got in the wording of all this stuff, you could change a lot of things around, make them better sounding, but still, yet, are you trying to extract that from this?
I'm making a point that they're paying for property tax to do these things, to have these things, and just because they have a business, they should benefit from that, too, because they pay taxes on these places, all your property.
Elsie, let me, can I add something to that?
Sure.
From a drafting perspective, these are your findings. You are the council. You are the people that are making these findings. Just because I wrote this as dicta, just, you know...
I'm not catching your words.
Lawyer stuff doesn't mean you have to adopt it. So, the whereas stuff is whatever you want it to be. So, if you can change that if you want, it doesn't, it's not part of the ordinance. It's just part of the...
Verbage?
Introductory preamble to a law, okay? So, you can change that, you can delete that if you want. It's really just for, the primary purpose of this ordinance was just to find a registration database for the Airbnbs or rental, short-term rental properties other than commercial institutions such as hotels and others. This goes for residential dwelling units, people that, you know, are dwelling units, it's either owner occupied or not owner occupied. And, you know, you could actually, under this ordinance, which is mirrored from the counties, an owner of the property could rent it to somebody else, and then somebody else could then re-let it out for short-term purposes, if there's a written agreement that is approved by the code enforcement officer.
I understand that. I'm just, I'm just, the wording is not what I would have put in there. I think it is incorrect because these people already pay for the services that they're getting here in town, roads, police, et cetera, through their property tax.
Well, we could take out the last clause, just rental properties for the privilege of doing business in the city of LaGrange, and the public services comes just by virtue of your property tax, I think is the point you're trying to make.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, just with that, would that make more sense, just for the privilege of doing business and deleting benefiting from the public services? Okay. I mean, that's fine.
If it's agreeable with everybody else. If it's not, they can vote, you know, vote it in, and that's fine.
I would like to state that just because you pay property taxes, that does not give you the privilege to run a business in this town. You do have to have a business license, and as far as I can see, this is nothing more than a business license. And Beach, I will have to agree with you that we could cross that whole paragraph out. It wouldn't mean anything to the ordinance. It doesn't change the ordinance at all. It's just an introduction to the ordinance.
I didn't try to change the ordinance. The point was, you were saying that this was, you were saying that it's for benefit, because they're going to benefit from the public services that you're already paying for. That's what I object to.
Right.
Not the fact that they're, yes, they should have a business license because they're in a business. I agree with that.
The only time these whereas's come into effect is when an ordinance gets challenged judicially, and the judge looks at, well, what was the legislative purpose of this ordinance? And then they might read the whereas's as to see what you were thinking when you passed this law. So, it's, you know, that's the only reason that it's in there, you know? It's, you know, it's a little bit more than fluff, but not a whole lot.
Okay. With that being said, the person, I guess it's Councilman Davenport, are you okay within your motion, staying with your motion, to delete that paragraph altogether?
I wouldn't do that.
I wouldn't delete the whole paragraph.
Whatever parts of it, from the public...
My point is, it don't make a difference. I mean, they're paying property tax, but they're also making money by doing a short-term rental on that. And there's no telling what they would make by having somebody here on Derby Day renting their property for $1,000 a night or $2,000 a night. So, I don't see that it makes any difference if, it doesn't change ordinance at all, and all it is is the whereas, but I don't have a problem with it if you want to. I don't want the whole paragraph removed. I want amended for that, but if you want to take the benefiting from public services of the city of LaGrange out of it, I don't have a problem with that.
That's the thing that I'm objecting to.
That's fine. I don't have a problem with it.
Can you delete that?
So, we've changed, so we put a period after the word "properties" and delete the last part of that sentence, "for the privilege."
I would think so.
Well, you could even, no, you could leave that in there because that is, you are paying for the privilege of having a business. I understand that. But you are not paying this fee to benefit from the public services that you're already paying for.
Remove the period.
It's semantics, but, I mean...
Beach, you can read it as it's going to go.
Okay. So, the, currently, it'll read like, whereas the City Council finds, and this is, this is, you know, we haven't really had a chance to talk about legislative stuff with the new council, but usually, the council has to make findings, okay? So, this would be that you all have found, after having thoroughly investigated and studied this, that the City Council finds that there's a valid need to identify all short-term rental properties operating within the city to regulate said rental activities for the public health, safety, and welfare, and to collect a reasonable fee from the owners or operators of short-term rental properties. And then I think the proposal is, we just stop it right there and delete the last half of that sentence. Is that what your recommendation was, Bill?
You could leave for the privilege of doing business.
Okay. For the privilege of doing business and then just stopping there and deleting the last half of that sentence, last clause.
Okay.
It doesn't change ordinance any, so it's fine.
Everyone understand that? A period at the word "business"?
It makes the ordinance the same, but it takes the verbiage to where it should be.
Mayor Davenport says he's okay with that correction or change?
Yes, sir.
Doesn't affect the ordinance itself, so, uh...
I'm fine with it, mayor.
We still have a motion and a second, any, any, um, further discussion from the council on this ordinance before you? If not, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion, this ordinance be approved as presented with those corrections noted. You've got a motion, a second, all those in favor of the motion, let me know what I'm saying, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six, six to two. Yes, ma'am, okay. Always will say, for those who are opposed, you're, you're, you're certainly welcome to expand on your opposition, okay, if you choose to.
I mean, my, my stance on this is similar to the other rental one that's coming up, and that, both I'm opposed to simply from the purpose that the individual's paying property taxes, it's their personal property, they'll be paying taxes if they make anything, but for a lot of the three houses that are here, most of the time, it's people who, if they can get it, rent it for the night, but otherwise, they're living there, they're paying property taxes, they're maintaining their home, so I'm just not personally in favor of the additional tax.
So, so I understand, you're, you're, you're against the whole ordinance period, correct? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Okay, anyone else in opposition want to speak?
I won't go into, uh, a ton of detail, but I have similar thoughts behind these as well, I know we've discussed these for several years, um, I'm not in favor of either one as well, but I'll just leave it at that.
So, let me ask you something, since the county is going to receive it, as they have been doing, correct?
They are receiving it for everybody but LaGrange.
They have been receiving for everybody but LaGrange, and now we just want to mirror what the county's doing ourselves, but the county does not have any jurisdiction in the city to have collected on it previously, correct?
Correct, the city council last year didn't want to be involved with the county.
Okay, 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 it's passed at six to two. Okay, all right, let's move on to, uh, our second one.
Okay, this is the second reading of...
Adam Levin, go ahead, Beech.
This is second rea, second reading of ordinance number nine of two thousand nineteen, it's an ordinance of the city of LaGrange requiring registration of rental properties and owners, which was introduced by Councilman Lamline on May sixth, two thousand seventeen. In summary, the city council has found that the, there was a legitimate need to accurately identify the real parties and interests involving ownership of rental property for purposes of official notification, service of process, or emergencies involving public health, safety, or welfare, and that's a reading and summary of the ordinance nine for the registration of rental properties and owners.
Okay, uh, Councilman Lamline, would you like to go ahead and make that motion to adopt and approve this ordinance before the council tonight?
I will make a motion to approve, uh, ordinance nine da, or dash, twenty nineteen.
A motion has been made, is there a second to that?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mayor Davenport, okay, at this time, I'd ask for a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
Debbie Pollard, second by Trey Kammer, all those in favor of the motion, let me know what I'm saying, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we're in public hearing for this particular ordinance, it's ordinance two, nine dash, two nineteen, uh, Ms. Stephanie Winter, would you come forward and explain this ordinance to the city council and the general public as well?
This ordinance is also one that has kind of been in the works for a couple of years, so it's gone through a couple of different administrations. One of the big reasons for this rental property registration is, from a code standpoint, we've got several landlords that don't live around here, they live in California, they live in New Jersey, they live in Florida, who knows where they are, so if there's a code violation at their house, right now, our option is to send them a letter, which sometimes they don't answer, or sometimes it takes a couple of weeks to get to them, um, because their tenants are refusing to do what they need to do as far as the code violation is concerned, so we wanted to come up with a way to be able to contact these people in a more direct route, so we can pick up a phone and say, hey, your tenants are throwing all their trash in the front yard, we need you to do something about it, that's one reason why, why we've been wanting this ordinance. Another reason is, in the city of LaGrange, if you're doing business, you are required to have a business license, there are several landlords that do have rental properties that do not have a business license, for the most part, everybody is in compliance, but we do have some that we can't, we can't find, we can't keep track of. The, going again with the local contact information, unfortunately, there have been a couple of times we've had drug activity at different rental houses, if we had ways of getting ahold of the landlord, the owner of the property, we could probably eliminate a lot of the issues that we have at that house, but again, if we don't have that contact information, we have outdated PVA information, people move, they don't update their information, the letters come back to us in the mail, you know, violations continue. When we put this together, it kind of went back and forth as far as charging a registration fee, letting it do for free, the initial registration fee would be a forty dollar fee, you would register all of your property, if you have ten properties, it would cost you forty dollars, if you have one property, it would cost you forty dollars, regardless, you being the owner of these properties, you would pay the same, just one fee, this is a one-time initial fee, at the end of the year, every year, you have to renew your application, that way, if you do move, you do get a different phone number, we have the, the most updated, most current information to get ahold of you, there is no annual registration fee, unless you don't register, and then there is a late fee, and that's when the ordinance kicks into place as far as citations go, and that is written in, into this ordinance. We would initially send out a notification with the September property tax bills, put a little note in there, letting people know, advising them of this, of the ordinance, if it does pass, that this is the new rule, make sure you're following it, here's what you need to do to get registered, they would be due at the November fifteenth every year, so it's not a beginning of the year thing, it's an end of the year thing, it would be easier, you know, a slower time to track this, but I think in the long run, it would really benefit the city to help us get ahold of these people that we can't get ahold of. Sometimes tenants move out and they leave everything behind, and the landlord doesn't know it until a month later when they don't get their rent paid, and then they start questioning, and meanwhile, the neighbors are the ones that are looking at this mess. From a criminal standpoint, it's the same thing also, if we've got criminal activity going on there, or if the police are repeatedly going to this address for domestic calls or drug-related calls, if we can get ahold of a landlord, let them know what's going on at that house, I bet it would, I bet they'd really clean things up, you know, landlords don't want that type of tenant in their rental properties, so that's what this ordinance is all about, giving us a way to contact the owner.
And you would also need a business license there too, because it's for commercial and or...
They would need a, yes, for those that are not, those that do not have a business license would be required to get current with a business license.
And that's once a year?
That's once a year.
And then you pay your percentage on the rental of the property, you'll pay your percentage?
You pay gross receipts, and so what it amounts to in LaGrange is if you make anything, you pay fifty-five dollars for anything under sixty-eight thousand dollars, is what it amounts to, so if you're making over sixty-eight thousand dollars on rental property in LaGrange, then, yes, your percentage that you owe would go up.
I don't think that's right, I think you're paying oh, oh, eight, oh, 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 eight.
Okay, you've heard...
Can I ask what the purpose is of the forty dollar registration fee?
That is to initially set up the database and to pay our initial costs as far as mailing this out, notifications, that type of thing. And this is for residential and commercial, um, a lot, most cities have actually gone to something like this, I do, every year, I get phone calls from a guy up in Cincinnati who owns the property that Feeder Supply is renting, and he wants to pay his rental license fee because they do that in Cincinnati, and so he's used to doing that, and every year, the past two years, I've told him, we don't have that here, so you don't, you don't pay that, so this is for residential, it is for commercial, another good example is Planet Fitness, when Planet Fitness was being built, um, actually, I think it was before Planet Fitness was there, but whoever owned the Oldham Oaks was having some bankruptcy issues or some sort of financial issues, there was a water pipe that burst inside that building, and when we found out about it, we didn't even know who to contact to come and fix the problem, we didn't have any contact information on owner information for the shopping center.
Had you thought about penalizing the person who's living in a rental house that allows something like garbage in the front yard, or the flooding of the basement with the water, you know, anything?
Well, we have ordinances that we go after them for, yes.
So you're doing an ordinance for the owners, and then you already have an ordinance for the renters?
We have an ordinance for the owner of the property.
And PVA cannot give you current information?
PVA may not have the current information, I mean, whatever information they have is what's in their database, but if somebody moves repeatedly and doesn't update that information, uh, we get tax bills, property tax bills that come back every year too, because people don't update their information.
So what do we do if they do not respond and, and register it then, what do you do to them?
Well, then we hold them liable, we issue them a citation, we call them before the code enforcement board.
How you gonna get ahold of them if you can't get ahold of them?
We'll have to use other means to try and find it out, but that would be, that would be a minority, that wouldn't be the majority of people, the majority of people are doing things right, and they want to do things right.
Right, I understand that.
And there's always going to be people that slip through the cracks.
I don't see, I know, but I don't see how you can get those people if, if they're not cooperating.
Well, this will give us a little bit more of a legal leg to stand on, and I can have the city attorney help with other options to get them and hold them accountable.
Uh, Elsie, there's a, uh, if you can't find the real party in interest, the owner of the property, it, it authorizes the city clerk to place a lien upon the property.
Okay.
Uh, and then you have that power, where if the lien builds up, I mean, you can actually foreclose on the property, you know, but it's primarily, usually, when the lien gets on the property, the person wants to sell it sooner or later, they come out of the woodwork, but in the meantime, all we can do is, like we've done on some properties, is we, we hire public works, or we have public works, you know, clean up the property, and then they then assess their fee to the cleanup charge, you know, for the cost of the cleanup, which is what happened on that West Main property.
On the what property?
The West Main Street property.
Okay.
Okay, Stephanie, thank you for your report, if no other councilperson has anything else for Stephanie at this time, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public, um, for those who are here tonight, is anyone wishing to come forward in support of this ordinance before the council? Anyone, if not, anyone willing to step up and speak in opposition to this ordinance? Okay, no closing statements, so if no one's willing to step up, speak in opposition, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearings, or entertain a motion from the council, we go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Trey Kammer, second by, who was that?
Andrea.
Andrea, all those in favor of the motion, let me know what I'm saying, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
What, to go out of public hearing?
No, no, okay, you're not voting on the ordinance then.
Everybody's going out of public hearing right now.
Okay, good, well, I'm glad of that, I'm opposed to that, too, that's okay.
Are you in favor of going back out, in the regular session, out of public hearing?
No, I, I apologize.
Okay, okay.
Same here, sorry.
Okay.
It's very hard to hear with this system in here, I think it needs to be upgraded.
So anyway, okay, all those in favor of the motion, let me know what I'm saying, aye?
In favor of what, now wait, is this...
Everyone's agreeable then, okay.
Is this, wait, hold on, of the...
Just to go out of public hearing?
Make it specific, we can't hear you, you know.
Okay, specific, yes, ma'am, okay, now, we have a motion and a second on the table for the approval and adoption of this ordinance before the council, it's in the council's hands at this time, and it's open for discussion. Anyone wishing to discuss the motion before the council, we have a motion to approve?
Mayor, in, in the, my last administration, we, we fought this to find people, uh, daily, you know, I mean, it's just like, uh, Stephanie, code enforcement said, you know, we, we've got people that's living California and everywhere else, and their property's just, uh, nobody's taking care of it, you can't get in touch with them, and it's an eyesore to the city, and it's, uh, this will actually, and just like, uh, uh, Beech said, uh, you know, at least we've got some teeth now that we can do something about it like we didn't have before, so, uh, I think it's a plus for the city of LaGrange, especially we can clean up some property if we, you know, if we've got this ordinance to, to stand behind us, and, uh, hopefully, we can, we can get people to respond to this, and we'll know how to get ahold of somebody in New Jersey, California, New York, or wherever they are that owns this property in LaGrange, that they never see it, as long as they get their rental check, uh, and it's usually going through, uh, some management, is that right, Stephanie? Some management company has them, and you don't even know who that is, that manages a property for them, so we, we found that out, that we've had, actually had, uh, some company that manages that property for the people, so, and we, we've been able to deal with them sometimes and, and get, get it done, get the property cleaned up, so, it's just, it's just something that, you know, I, I strictly believe we need to do.
I think you're penalizing the people here in the city that are doing the right job on their properties and things, and the people who are not, that are out of town, like you're talking about, are getting away with it, but you're not going to be able to do anything to them anyway, because you're not going to be able to find them.
I disagree with that, but that's okay.
Okay, we can disagree, I like you.
That's your, your opinion.
I like you, I'm, I'm just saying.
Yeah, that's fine, I stated my opinion, so...
That's cool, okay, uh, Mayor Davenport has spoken, anyone else wish to speak on the subject before the council? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve this ordinance before the council, let me know, let, be known what I'm saying, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, take a roll call vote, please, Stephanie.
Trey?
No.
Mary?
No.
Leslie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Andrea?
No.
Bill?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
The tie.
There you go, mayor.
He didn't call my name, but she...
I tell you what, uh, I own property, I'm more than willing to pay forty dollars, uh, I think originally when someone said it was going to go into effect, it might be forty dollars per property, I thought that was extravagant high, how in the world you need to charge somebody forty dollars for every property they own, why not make it one fee for all properties, get, at least get them on a database, get them registered in the city, as Mayor has said too, um, I think probably, a lot of my time, in a week's time, is talking to Stephanie Winter on how, how can we get this piece of property cleaned up, uh, I've seen it done today in the city, where the grass was mowed three foot high, and I said, well, you got to get ahold of these people, and there's people calling me about, there's varmints running in these weeds, there's everything in the world, and believe it or not, we have a lot of rental property in this city, there's a lot of rental property, people don't even realize how much, you know, I'm not going to name neighborhoods, but a lot of these neighborhoods have a lot of rental units, I think utilities would vouch for that, they know how many rental units we have and who all is, uh, operating them, and I think, uh, it's a one, one-time fee only, correct, Stephanie, one-time registration forever, and I don't think, as a city that's growing and has more apartment rentals coming in, and people buying up these, uh, foreclosures and turn them into rentals, they're everywhere, and I don't think for a mere forty dollars to get them registered into a database where we have a contact number, a management company, is too much for them to ask, I've even spoken with the rental friends that I have in the city, and I think they actually support this, you know, the ones I've spoken with, there might be ones who are going to be against anything and everything, but, uh, I think that being said, I think the mayor's correct, when you're sitting here day in, day out, trying to oversee and find these different property owners throughout the city, I don't care if it's roofs blown off, uh, water erupting, uh, just nasty conditions, we need to be able to have these people where we can locate them, and I think for forty dollars a year, it's not too much to ask, so I would vote in favor of it.
And I have talked to people who have rental property, a lot of rental property, and they disagree, they think the Airbnb should, because that is actually, you know, being run that way, they think... being run that way. They think you should have a business license, but they really object to the registration to get their address, when you're really penalizing them, instead of penalizing the people who are out of town who are not giving you the address.
Yeah, but when you got these people in the same neighborhoods, and they're calling you, Elsie, and they say, how come this person next door, weeds are going sky high, and no one's doing anything about it? We've got to be able to get ahold of those people, because they're out-of-town type investors.
So if you can't get ahold of them, how you going to get ahold of them?
We're going to call them, and we're going to hunt them down.
And you don't have their address, and you don't have, you don't know where they are.
Okay. Motion's, motion carried. So I appreciate your thoughts on it, though.
It was four to four, wasn't it?
Yeah, but I broke the tie in favor of.
Oh, okay. I'll remember that.
Okay, let's keep moving. Thank you all for the good discussion on that matter. See, we're very balanced, four, four, four against, and whatever. Okay, we're going to try to keep moving, everyone. It's quarter to eight. Debbie, you okay?
Yes.
Do you need to get some water?
I do. I got water.
Okay, you got water.
She's not contagious. It's okay.
Okay, tonight, we have our second reading on our public hearing for the adoption of our annual city budget. So Beech, would you like to enter, speak to the council about the wording and the language in this budget presented tonight?
Sure, we're going to read all these different ones in separately, and then...
Speak into your microphone, please.
I can hear you.
Can you hear me? On this microphone, because they cannot hear you down there.
We need a new sound system.
Scoot up, everybody.
Whisper into it.
All right, I won't, I won't. I'll just speak up, then. This is the second reading of ordinance number three, 2019, which I believe was introduced by Trey. Is that correct, Trey?
Correct.
All right, Trey Kramer. All right, and this is the annual budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2020, by estimating funds for the operation of the city government. Being an annual budget proposal and message that was prepared and delivered to the city council, with total revenues and expenses of $7,850,00340. That's a reading and summary of the ordinance number three, 2019.
Okay, who at this time would like to introduce this ordinance in its second reading tonight in order to move to a public hearing?
I don't think you have to introduce it as a second. It was introduced by Trey originally.
So I'll make a motion to accept, uh, three dash 2019.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Kramer, second by Joe Davenport. Okay, at this time, I ask for a motion to go into a public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made by Davenport, second by Trey Kramer. All those in favor of the motion? Let me know. I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, as you've heard, this is the introduction of our city ordinance, city budget for the next fiscal year, 2019 through 2020. I can talk more in depth about it. It may be in our discussion if you choose to, but at this time, I would ask anybody who would like to come up and speak on support of the ordinance, or something you'd like to see otherwise done, if you know anything about this proposed ordinance, you're welcome to come forward and, at this time, and speak anything you choose to speak in terms of city financials. Anyone here would like to come up and oppose this ordinance that we have before us tonight? If not, no one? Okay, that being said, there's no closing statements by the general public or anyone to close on their position. I'll entertain a motion that we go out of public hearing.
Oh, moved.
Second.
Motion made by, who was that? Debbie, second by Leslie. All those in favor of the motion? Let me know. I'm saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, very briefly, to the council, first page of the orders before you, you will see the total revenues of $7,850,340. Of that amount, I'm just going to briefly overview this, because you've heard it through our discussions. There has been a little bit of minute changes over the course of this budget adoption, but of the $7,850, we're anticipating $2.9 million to come from compensation tax itself. Second page, it talks about your administration, your special appropriations, your police, public works, compensation itself, the compensation income of 2.9 for a total of $7,850,340. Third page, when we were talking about our revenues, that's, once again, where our money's going to be derived from. You look down the bottom of those lines, you see $7,850. If you back 2.9 million away from that, 7,850, you have remaining, a number of $4,950. So that will actually be the amount of money to operate the city with, of $4,950,340, that's not restricted by the compensation tax revenues. They can be spent specifically for only items that we feel are deemed allowable under the ordinance for the compensation tax. Under administration, you have your full-time salaries, overtime salaries, mayor council, all your different unemployment insurances, computer maintenance. One new thing we have in our administration side, I'd like to point this out, will be the Paylosti payroll type of system. We have 67 hundred new dollars in there for that. Thus, that will allow all of our payroll to be direct deposited into banks, so the employees can get their payroll deposit into a local bank of their choice, to make sure if the payroll's done on Thursday, their checks will automatically go in at a certain time, Thursday night, every time. They won't have to search their check down and get it into a bank. I've heard that from different employees, wish we could move to that type of system. So that will be done through a company that we've dealt with, Stephanie, myself, and Heather, called Paylosti. One thing I want you to see in administration, employee HRA. If you see that item, does everyone see that at the bottom line on the administration's page? What we've done here in the last few number of weeks, honestly, we do have, we offer the employees a HRA in our health insurance package. It's a $5,000 reimbursement from the city, and we have divided our costs for the first time. These costs, in my opinion, have not been tracked in the budget since the inception of the HRA, which, at this time, we're going to go ahead and insert it into our actual out-of-pocket expenses, which, for the administration's side only, under HRA, the employees would be entitled up to $15,544 in the event they choose to exercise their HRA that we will be offering them in our health insurance provision. I assume everyone sees that, correct?
Yes.
Does everyone see that and understand that? So each public department, I think our total HRA that's been provided by our health carrier will be somewhere in the neighborhood of $136,000. The city council and the city employees will receive approximately $89,000 of that amount, of the 136. The remaining amount will go to LaGrange Utility Commission, and they will use that HRA in the event their employees want to turn in different types of bills, up to a amount, I believe, of being $5,000 for full reimbursement under their health plan. Administration's $1,133, special appropriations $1,021, police department $1,527, public works $1,268, for a total allocation of $4,950 and change for the administration. Special appropriations, city bus, we don't have any Oldham Reserve comp removal this year. That will, we will be out of it by June 30th. Historic District Commission, I've tried to get them some money in terms of training purposes, stuff like that, so we've upped that to $5,000 solely for the Historic District Commission to use at their discretion, however they could use that. Main Street, county insurance premium tax, mayor's discretionary fund went up a little bit. Let's see, we got our Eagle Creek we're still paying for. What we're actually going to carry over, council, this budget is tight. It's really tight. So of the millions, of the $7,850, we're sort of conservative in some of our budgeting and our income side, but we will have a difference of $25,164 this budget season. Typically, when I've put budgets together, I like to try to anticipate carrying over two or three, $400,000. But we are doing the things we have to do, and we're paving roads, we're buying police vehicles, we're buying public works expensive equipment, we're replacing a single-axle dump truck that was bought when I was mayor 30 years ago, and it's still on the road today, so I think its time is up. So I think we put $145,000 in for Cory, a new dump truck, that still will make it up Highway 53 Hill. But I will tell you, part of this tightness of this budget is the things that we're outlining for this year. Of course, the truth of the matter is, if we lay these things out this year, I guarantee you there'll be other things we need to lay out for next year. So this budget is going to remain to be tight of the $4,950,000 we take in on our general fund revenue, not including compensation tax. Also down there, we have training for boards and commissions, another $3,000. Any of our boards who need some training, I would certainly like to get them some training. Highway 53, 146 stoplights. I talked to the state highway today. They should be getting on these traffic signals. I'm going to look to the camera. Any day, the poles are going to be put into the, into the concrete sidewalks. And I talked to Kevin Bailey today, and those signal lights downtown should be going in any day, is what I was told today. So any of your constituents and the general public, we've heard a lot about these stoplights. On your compensation tax debt service, actually, of the 2.9 million we'll take in, approximately two and a half million is committed to the $100,000 approximately per month to pay off the debt. $525,000 we will give to the county out of their one-half portion of Oldham Reserve comp taxes. And then also, we are committed to help build either Eden Parkway and/or Peak Road, one-half share in Oldham Reserve that this council has approved the engineering for thus far. But yet, we will have to build one of those roads specifically, probably within the next year or so, as this council is aware of. I talked to the county today, and they are actually going to fund themselves. They filled two of the roads, Peak Road and Eden Parkway, both. But at this particular time, I said, I'm not in a position at this time to commit both legs of that road, if you all understand what I'm talking about. I think we're in for possibly the extension of Eden Parkway and/or Peak Road, but we're yet to decide which of those roads we will extend for future uses. We have given the Parks Board another $28,750 over and above their normal appropriation of $35,000. So you see what those expenses will go for, Eagle Creek and Wilbourn Dam. We're going to install electric out at the pavilion at the golf course, and a swing set at Eddy Mondo Park, and some cameras in our city parks to go to the parks. The police department, Chief Colette's here tonight. He's worked hard to help us keep that police department in good shape, good funding. Certainly appreciate Officer Wiggers being here tonight with us. It's CJ Wiggers, everyone, sitting back there in the back. So if you don't know him, he's our LaGrange policeman, a fine young man. Right, CJ? Great, great, great man sitting there. On our police, it's just typical police items. I think the chief is going to take his car and turn it into a full-fledged road patrol car, and he has a car in here for himself, and our general fund expense for the police of $20,000 to buy something that he doesn't necessarily need, a full-fledged equipped car to do what the officers need to be doing, that they're patrolling the streets day in and day out, day out. I'm sorry I'm going on here too much, but Public Works, as Cory, he's going to get him a 650-ton truck, I believe, for a $65,000, $70,000 bucks. That's probably in the municipal aid budget a little later, but you do see new equipment over $300 for $145,000 for the single-axle dump truck, brand new. I'm sure Cory has some paving in his budget as well. $100,000, that's just in this portion of the budget alone. He has other paving monies in the municipal aid side of this budget. So that's all I have right here, but I will say to the council, we hope that we run like we tend to think we will on our income versus our revenues, but to say we're going to pocket a lot of money when this budget comes to an end next June 30th, I doubt that will be the case. But that's just where we are within our income side versus our expenditures. Does any councilman wish to comment on any category of the budget at this time?
No, I think the committee's done a fine job, and I really appreciate the transparency and all of us working together. It's been great. Thank you all.
I appreciate the mayor doing his blackboards.
Yeah.
The work that, on our meetings and explaining it all to us. So it really makes it easier when you come to these meetings to, when you actually look at it and present it to the public, that the council knows exactly every number there, by the mayor presenting that the way he did for our committee meetings, and having everything on a blackboard and explaining it to it. So I appreciate that, Mayor.
And I think care has been taken to spend the money where it should be taken, too.
Well, I'll say this, and this is for the city, this is for the people. We're in really, really good shape financially in the administration and our side of the money. We have, we do have decent reserve, and even though we have a budget here to the city council, if something comes up in this fiscal year coming up, and we need to say, hey, this is important to the city at this time, then we always have the ability to move into an area of what I would call definitely reserve fund cash balances, to try to capture some of that in the event this council has something they would like to see done, because these budgets can be amended within the budgeting year. So we have a motion to approve and a second. Is there any further discussion on this budget? If not, I'll entertain a motion by the council to, I've got the motion. All those in favor of the motion, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, let me know. I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Whoa, that was good.
Okay, real quick, let's keep moving. Mr. Cragmire?
Okay, this will be the second reading of ordinance number four, of the Roads Fund, an ordinance adopting the city of LaGrange, Kentucky's annual municipal road aid fund for fiscal year July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, being an annual budget for the municipal road aid fund proposal and message that was prepared and delivered to the city of, city council of LaGrange, with total revenues and expenses of $321,000, which was introduced by Councilman Trey Kammer.
Okay, entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
Motion going to public.
Motion made by Debbie, second by Leslie.
I need a point of order. I think we have to have a motion to approve first, so I'll make that motion to approve ordinance four dash 2019.
And I'll second that, Trey.
Okay, motion by Trey, second by Mayor Lamline. Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Let me know. I'm saying aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, now, take a motion to go into public hearing. Motion made by Debbie, second by Leslie. All those in favor of the motion? Let me know. I'm saying aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, we're in public hearing for municipal aid. Pretty much speaks for itself. Cory, do you have that before you, sir? Find it? I have one right here. Why don't you come up, why don't you come up and explain to the council real quick about exactly where, for the new council folks, what this is about, how you derive monies from it, where the money comes from, and how you expect to spend it?
Most of the money, if you don't know, that comes from municipal road...
Most of the money, if you don't know, that comes from municipal road aid is from gasoline tax, which we're allotted every month. We take a monthly check, which it varies. So it's been pretty steady over the past two years, I guess you'd say, $13,000 range a month. It's kind of what we figured on. It goes anywhere from 12,000 to 18,000 dollars. It's for any type of improvement in the roadways. You can buy equipment with it, you can mostly, I tend to lean towards using it for more paving, keep the streets looking good, but sometimes budget calls that we sometimes do buy equipment out of it. So sometimes no more than one truck. We'll buy salt, of course, snow removal. Utilities cut, we put that in there several years ago, just as a little buffer, just in case. We do hit utilities from time to time. I'm sure the utility department could agree. Sidewalks, of course, anything that is paid for with sidewalks has to be on city streets. We cannot put sidewalks on a state highway for this much. There's very specific things you can and can't do with it, but for the most part. We've got several roads that are coming up, and we've been accumulating a list coming up, and I can pass that out if you all wish to see what's coming up. Other than that, any questions?
Grange Drive contracted out. Grange Drive.
Yeah.
They contracted out.
They're about halfway through. I'm hoping to try to get it in on the spring pave, we'll see. Have to get to moving in about two more weeks.
The Grange Drive, that's coming out of municipal aid, correct? Out by Wendy's?
Depends. If we can get it in for this year, we'll pay for it out of.
Okay. That's that project going out by Wendy's. How much does that come in at bid-wise?
140,000, I believe.
140,000, okay. Okay, there's no question for Cory about municipal aid. I will ask anyone here tonight, if they'd like to come up and support the municipal aid ordinance, you're welcome to at this time. Is anyone here in support of it? Anyone here opposed to how we're gonna spend this money in municipal aid? No one's opposed either, so I'll close, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Andrea, second by Leslie, or Trey?
Sure.
Or who?
I don't think anybody, you did.
Leslie?
Okay, I'm sorry.
All is in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye?
Aye.
We'll get it right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve our municipal aid expenditures. Is there any discussion on the motion before the council? If not, all is in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, Mr. Cregmaugh?
Moving right along. This is the second reading of ordinance number five of 2019 series for an annual, for an ordinance adopting the City of LaGrange, Kentucky's annual city bus budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, being the annual city bus budget that prepared and delivered to the City Council of LaGrange, and with total revenues and expenses of 132,227 and 6 cents, that was introduced by Councilman Kamer.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 5-2019.
Okay, motion made by Trey in a second. We voting on these now?
No, no, a motion to go into public hearing.
Okay. All right, we got a motion, a second. Now we need a motion to go into public hearing.
Joe.
Make the motion? Okay, I'm sorry, Joe. Motion made by Joe, second by who?
Leslie.
Leslie? All is in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we have this ordinance before you, it's talking about the operation of our city Katie Bechtow, who's not here tonight, she had a severe hand injury, and she was at the Coutts and Kleiner today with it. She's doing okay, but I know she had a checkup today, so she's not able to be with us tonight. Our bus seems to be doing fine. Any councilman or lady have a question on this city bus allocation for the year at this time? Any discussion on it? If not, we'll go into public hearing. Anyone here want to support our city bus service and come up and say something good about it? Do you support this ordinance? Anyone opposed to our city bus service? Okay? It's a great service, I will say that for it. A lot of people ride it, our ridership's up. I think all of our people are doing great things with getting our people to and from. So at this time, I'd ask for a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Trey, second by Leslie. All is in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the bus ordinance. Any further discussion on this bus ordinance? No? All is in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. What else we have? Mr. Cregmaugh?
We're up to number six now. Six of seven. This is ordinance number six of series 2019, which is an ordinance adopting the City of LaGrange, Kentucky's alcohol regulatory fees budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, being the annual budget for the alcohol regulatory fees that has been prepared and delivered to the city council by Councilman Kamer, with total revenues and expenses of 535,792.50. That's the second reading of ordinance six for the alcohol regulations.
Okay, who's making the motion?
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance 6-2019.
Okay, second?
Second.
Seconding? Okay, who makes the motion to go into public hearing?
So moved.
Anyone seconding? Second? All is in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, tonight, you will see this alcohol budget before you. The chief, you're welcome to come up. I will tell you a little bit about this. If you look on your second page, our fees and tax collections, we estimate will be somewhere in the range of 345,000 dollars. Our auditors have told us that we've been carrying a surplus of monies within this alcohol budget for a number of years, and it has somewhat climbed somewhat. I think just a few months ago, was approaching somewhere in the neighborhood of 400,000 In this particular budget, in order to do the things we want to do and still stay within our approximately 25% to 26% of our total police budget, we're asking of alcohol-related money to be 535,000. Now, I want to caution the council, if you understand this, we are actually moving 191,792.50 from alcohol reserve money that was gathered by the city previously through alcohol regulatory fees. Thus, we have added 191 to the 344 for a 535,000 dollar expenditure. I want you to understand, this is offsetting our total police operations by this much. Next year, if we were to expend the whole reserve category, and it's basically eliminated, we will have to actually run the total police department with general fund monies, and only the amount of money that will be received in a given year through alcohol. Last year, this budget actually showed 478,000 of alcohol-related money. This year, we're up somewhat to 535. On the front pages, you can see exactly where the 535 is gonna be spent to help offset and enforcement of alcohol-related subjects. And we also have some part-time salaries of Stephanie Winter, who enforces some of the regulatory ordinances in terms of signage related to alcohol. And then, of course, we have Tara Kelton, who is the ABC administration clerk at the police department. We're attributing 75% of her salary from alcohol-related income. So hello, chief.
Hello, are you?
Good to see you tonight. Anything you'd like to say about this particular ordinance we have before us?
I believe most of it, we've covered in the previous meetings and some of the committee meetings. Obviously, our projections, we lowered those from the 478, just wasn't there, inessential. To sum it up, the alcohol revenue's flatlined, barring some new business, retail or restaurant business coming in. This is where we expect this to stay, and hopefully, we don't have any closures, as the mayor spoke. The reason we're gonna dip into extra expenditure is try to update our fleet status and upgrade the fleet. Obviously, you could tell some of our budget lines, equipment maintenance, as far as vehicles, we've made quite an expenditure and have some repairs pending. It's just a point of, what's the better decision? Get rid of some of the 10-year-old cars, or go ahead and invest and use this as an avenue to update our fleet and give our guys decent equipment they can be proud of and keep them out of the shop. And obviously, the salary difference for Tara Kelton, that's basically almost her daily duty. She has multiple contacts every day with our restaurants and retail licenses, with alcohol questioning, guiding them through their application process, as well as on the state level, and sending them to the path to the contacts there, and as well as our local ordinance here to make sure everybody's in compliance. So she basically serves as a point of contact and keeps all the records and the binders per business and keeps those up to track and date, and follows the revenue track as well as there, and make sure the money's here on time and everybody's abiding by the ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Greg. No one has any question with you? I'll go ahead and open the floor to anybody who would like to come up and speak in support of their alcohol regulatory fee budget.
Thank you, chief.
Anyone here tonight to speak on behalf and in support of the alcohol regulatory budget portion? If not, anyone opposed to the budget itself? Okay, no one opposed, so I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Trey, second by Andrea. No further discussion? All is in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, you're opposed to go out of public hearing? Excuse me? You're opposed to go out of public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Okay, okay, he's in support of going out of public hearing, okay?
It's kinda hard to hear sometimes.
Okay, all right, now, we have a motion on the table and a second to adopt this alcohol regulatory fee budget. It's open for discussion. Mayor Lamline, sounds like you're in disagreement, maybe?
I am, but I'm not gonna open up that door to the public about this particular budget. I can only say that I spent hours and hours on the phone when I was mayor with the city fighting lawsuits from the Detective Restaurant Association about this tax.
So can you speak up a little bit?
Yeah, could you speak up your microphone, buddy?
Yeah, I can only say that when I was mayor, that I spent hours on the phone with the League of Cities, fighting lawsuits about this particular tax. And this tax is probably the most watched tax in the state of Kentucky by different organizations, and I just, I think we're asking for trouble.
Well, that being said, the fees, the fees and the revenue has come strictly and directly from alcohol fee numbers, and that's where this money has originated from. And it's to be spent in these categories, and if the auditors say it's been accumulated through this mechanism, and it's sitting in the treasury, and for whatever reason, it has not been spent previously in the previous administrations, and has accrued to this amount, then our only choice eventually is to give it back, lower the fee, and do whatever. But as I've said tonight, if we were basing this particular budget on only the 344, then there would have to be cuts made, no cars bought, because that's the only way they're being bought somewhat, not totally, through the regulatory fee income. So my only suggestion was, as was with the auditor, is reduce that, those fees over time, and get that accumulated revenue removed and gone. So that might be a subject for another day for discussion, but right now, this budget is before the city council for adoption. We have a motion to approve in a second, so if there's no further discussion on it, if there is, please speak. If there's not, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. Anyone wish to discuss further?
Mayor, in my last administration, I don't know, the auditors, we kept raising it, you know, we raised it up, I think from 22, we went to 25. And even the last meeting that we had while I was mayor, they told us that we need, said y'all need to get that alcohol reserve out of there, the reserve you're carrying over, because they said if you don't, if they say you have that much in there and you're not using it, and then they're gonna come in and tell you, you can't have your, you know, they're gonna cut you down to 3% instead of 5%. So as long as it's being used legit, if you're buying cars or putting, for people like Tara, that her revenue, because she is ABC Assistant Administrator, and that is the chief's administrator of it. So, you know, anything that's alcohol-related, my deal was, when I had the chief, I said, make sure you log in every domestic you have that's involved in alcohol, every traffic stop you have, anything that you have concerned with alcohol, make sure that you have a log and all that is logged in, in case the state comes down and asks you about that. And I preached that and drilled that the whole time. So as long as we have a good record of it, and we honestly spend it where it's supposed to be spent, I don't have a problem with it.
I would like the chief, I would like to ask you, are we keeping a good record of that? Is that actually being done? Are we logging all that?
When it comes to your crime reporting, and most certainly your traffic citations, there are blocks for alcohol involvement in the state reporting. Are we truly capturing in-house reporting to the exact detail? Maybe not. I mean, there are platoon or shift reporting mechanisms to the sergeants, but is it a part of report that we're producing on a regular basis? No, but as far as our state and national reporting, that's already on the form. For domestics, you suspect alcohol involvement, it's a checkoff. A crime that involves alcohol, drugs, narcotics, it's there. So we are already capturing that data when we send our records to KSP and FBI. That data is there. Do we lose maybe some local-level reporting? Possibly, because how do you account for every situation? Was there alcohol involved if one party's gone and you're getting just a word-of-mouth of alcohol? Of course, all your driving complaints, attempted locates, possible DUIs, that's captured through the CAD system or Old County Dispatch, and is easily obtainable, and can run statistics and timeframes and all that. You know, that's probably a vast majority of dispatched activity at the patrol level, is attempted locate on drunk-driving complaints or individual leaving a restaurant that other patrons felt might be intoxicated, and maybe calling dispatch to broadcast it out for all cars to look for. So the records are there and obtainable.
And I would ask you, please, to cross all your Ts and dot all your Is, because the Kentucky Restaurant Association is not a fun person to deal with.
Sure, and we're not here to abuse the tax. It's, you know, that's why it's there. Obviously, there's gonna be a higher degree of enforcement and law enforcement need when alcohol's in a community, so we understand that, and that's how we approach the situation.
Chief, would it be possible to run some sort of report on your police reports that would just search through for alcohol involvement and just come up with a raw number that would say, we had, you know, not even percentage-wise, just like we had like 14,000 incidents involving alcohol last year.
Any crime report, that's capturable through a query of crime reports, domestic violence reports.
Yeah, I think that would go a long way to helping bill, you know, defend.
That's built into the system as an easy query to make and have available, so.
That'd be great.
It's just, you might lose, like I said, you lose some data at a, you know, if... It's just, you might lose, like I said, you lose some data at a, you know, if CJ goes out on patrol tonight and he's flagged down by an individual that didn't go through dispatch, said, hey, I think I saw a person under the influence.
Does the report distinguish between alcohol or drug involvement?
In some reports.
Some of the reports, okay.
And of course, you know, I know we're dealing with alcohol tax, but, you know, you have different traffic charges for operating impaired. You can start slicing it down by the query if need be.
Okay. Thanks.
You know, I think too, Mayor Lamline, that over the course of the inception of the regulation and when this city began collecting this tax, as Stephanie does payroll, she files a retirement account numbers, pays state retirement, has her student retirement, and as she does that in the general fund, she eventually moves over and actually extracts alcohol money to replace what she's done in the general fund. You know, over the course of the time, maybe the actual allowable amount of monies that could have been taken from alcohol-related fees, maybe possibly, maybe for whatever reason, Stephanie, weren't used fully at our advantage because of the fees that we were taking in. So I think once this is removed and we get this gone, if we're down to 345 a year, we're well within the percentages of what we're expending on from alcohol-related funds in our total general fund or our total police department operations. We'd be probably down 10% or 12%. So actually, that's what I'm saying tonight. You know, we've got this extra money in to buy these cars, but next year, if we're down to 355 in alcohol income, the general fund's going to have to beef that side of it up to help offset if we're going to run a $2.1 million police budget. So that's sort of what we're faced with. So Bill, I take your point, but as Beech says, Joe said, and Chief said, we're going to document everything, and honestly, we're not trying to expend anything that we don't think rightfully we can do.
Right.
So we do have a motion and a second for the adoption of this. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion to approve this budget before you, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
It wasn't a very strong aye.
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 That's pretty weak, that's pretty weak. All those in favor the most, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Present.
Is that a no?
It's a present.
Okay, present, Stephanie.
It's not a vote.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Chief. Now, what I said earlier tonight, folks, I said I was going to slip this executive session in, but I don't see any reason.
Wait, we got one more.
We have one more?
Yep.
Okay, got an MS4 budget?
We got to make President Clinton happy.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. This is ordinance number seven of 2019, introduced by Councilman Camer also. An ordinance adopting the City of La Grange's annual Stormwater MS4 budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, being an annual budget for the Stormwater MS4 compliance proposal and message that has been prepared and delivered to the city council with total revenues and expenses of $328,771. That's the second reading of the Stormwater ordinance.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this budget before the council?
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance seven dash 2019.
Okay, motion to adopt it, and there's a second.
Second.
Second, we have a motion, a second. Okay, now, entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Joe, second by Trey Camer. All those in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Stormwater, I think it's a great revenue that we're receiving now that we have that back within the county and we're trying to control some of our revenues. I know it's very helpful to Cory and all his drainage issues around the city. He has a total of $328,000 to spend, a $228,000 and change carryover, in addition to the new 100 we get each year for a total of 328,771. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to support this ordinance? Anyone here opposed to this, how we're going to expend this money? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion made by Leslie, second by Trey. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion to close the public hearing, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Now, we have a motion and a second to approve this, adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion by the council? If not, all those in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you so much. Beech, you're looking, are you looking at me?
No.
Okay.
You're, you're.
Okay, what I was going to say here, I don't want to hold anyone here tonight any further, so instead of going into our closed session now, I just soon go through the remaining part of the agenda, and then we will try to do that right before we adjourn and then take it up as whatever deemed by the council. So I would like to, with your permission, I'd like to go ahead, item 17, and that's standing committee reports. Do we have any standing committee reports tonight?
Yes, I would like to apologize for forgetting about our meeting this past month. So I got a call from Wesley at 6:00, and she said, where is everybody? And I, what do you mean, where is I? I'm at home watching TV, what are you doing? So we do have a meeting scheduled now for June the 22nd, that's wrong, for June the 17th at 6:00 PM, City Hall.
And what is this committee, Mayor?
This Economic Directional Economic Committee in our southeast west.
Okay.
All around the town.
All right. Thank you. Any, okay, appreciate that report. Anyone else on a committee that you've met and you'd like to brief the total full council on your meeting?
Again, I could speak to the Buildings, Budget, Finance, and Utilities Committee. We met this past month and discussed the inventory of the city property. There was no action taken necessarily, it's still kind of in the discussion phase. We do have a meeting on 6/19, it's a Wednesday, at 5:00, and that'll also be in the City Hall building.
Okay.
That's the Buildings, Budget, Finance, and Utilities.
Give us the town again, Trey.
Uh, 5:00.
You're on that one, too.
Welcome.
Okay, Trey, would you like to elaborate a little or somewhat on our meeting with our health provider that we met with and we have chosen to go with our medical plan? Just briefly, and just sort of speak to what we decided?
Sure. So this is the Personnel, Insurance, Boards, and Commissions Committee. We met last month. We had some presentations by some individuals that wanted to go over the city insurance. I want to say on record, I had no voting or information that I provided to make the choice that the city has gone with. I recused myself from that part of the discussion, but the mayor had some folks come in, present several insurance options, and they were all good options. KLC came in as well. They wanted to have the opportunity to speak to us about that. And I will throw it back to the mayor on this one as far as the choice, if you'd like to provide any additional.
We basically chose the Cadillac Plan, I'll call it. It's Cadillac. It's what basically our city employees have today across the board. It's a very, very nice policy. It comes also backed up with an HRA ability to, for out-of-pocket, up to $5,000 for a single, up to $10,000 for a family, out-of-pocket, that is very lucrative. And basically, we decided for another year, we're going to try to sustain what we've done for the employees across the board, not cut our benefits any at all. We will continue to pay the full premiums for the different categories. The single will cost 375,46, the family 1201,47, the employee spouse 821.01, and the employee child 713.37. The city will pay 90% of those premiums. I think that's what we're doing across the board, and it's a very, very nice policy. I don't believe you could get any better in terms of a city-sponsored plan. We have Vision, we have Dental, we have some life insurance attached, and we renewed with the same person providing our insurance presently, Bobby Newt, Bobby Newt, and he's very attentive. He's certainly glad to serve the city another year, and this policy for our employees will cost somewhere altogether, probably about half a million dollars a year, about a $500,000 time you add it all together. But, you know, I was looking at, I sign a lot of checks every day for employees, and I see what they're doing, I know they're working hard, they're doing good things from our city across the board, and I think we have a insurance, health insurance policy that is probably equal to none, but yet, none of these people, in my opinion, are getting wealthy at these city positions. They're good positions, they have a nice retirement plan to go with them, and I think personally, as long as we can continue to offer this and be able to afford it, we need to be doing that for our city employees. And that's what we'll continue to do. If the point, we get to the point that this is too lucrative, then this council's going to have to say this is one area we can look at, but, you know, tell you what, time the taxation and everything gets done with you, you don't have a whole lot to take home. And if we can give them a good health plan, I think that's very important. So that's what we have. Trey, thank you for being there in the committee. We, I think we listened intently. We did put it out to a bid form, and I think that helped us with a 7% reduction in our human health plan. It came in at 327,000 for the basic plan, I think last year was 353. We were anticipating in our budgeting it might go up, but actually, it not only didn't go up, it went down across the board, so that was huge to this city. So thank you, Trey, again.
Sure thing.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I'd like to add, so that same committee will meet on June 26th at 5:00, same location, City Hall.
Okay. Anyone else on any standing committees, you're always welcome to speak up and let the other councilpeople know what you're up to? Nothing? Okay?
Trey, that's the Insurance Board that's meeting.
Personnel, Insurance, Boards, and Commissions.
June 26th?
June 20th, Wednesday, June 26th, 5:00. Do you want to speak about the Park Committee, or you want to wait?
What's that?
Let me ask a question on it, is, was there going to be a meeting with the, like, I don't think the department heads, I mean, I don't think La Grange Utilities, they pay their insurance, I don't even think they knew what type of insurance we'd got for them or anything, or, weren't we going to have a meeting, or?
Yes, that's set up.
Bobby went out of town, didn't he, or?
He's, June 11th, June 11th, Stephanie's looking into that, she's already set it up. I don't know, I thought you got an email on that, didn't you, Stephanie, or not? But on June 11th, Ted will be there, but all the depart, you know, Chief and Cory, but the committee, we took the best that money could buy. So I don't think there's going to be any dislike to the choice.
What time?
If that's what you're asking, Joe.
John.
Stephanie, what time?
It's going to be June 11th, and there's going to be two meetings, one in the morning and one in the afternoon.
What time?
With employees.
I still want to know what time.
One at 9:00, one at 2:00.
Okay. Let's see, Mary Boltin, she usually speaks on behalf of the Committee of La Grange Historic District Guidelines. Anything to thank, Mary?
We'll be meeting on June 11th, which is a Tuesday, at 6:00 PM in City Hall, and we are on our final section, which is the appendix. So depending on how long that takes us, then we might be able to move forward a little bit faster, but we're making good progress.
Okay.
Mary, on June 22nd, which is a Saturday at 9:00 AM in the morning, Vicky Behrenberg will be here from the Kentucky Heritage Council to give a class on Preservation 101. So anybody like to show up for that, that would be great. That's June 22nd, 9:00 AM, upstairs, City Hall.
I encourage all of you to be there, please. Please be in attendance if you can. The reason being is, once Mary and her committee gets finished with this historical guidelines review, then all of these subjects and decisions and discussion they've had for the last number of months will be coming to the city council for your all's approval, we hope. So please try to take part in this meeting on January, I mean, June the 22nd, to learn all you can about this subject. Okay, unfinished business. Anybody like to bring up any unfinished business?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We have worked on the, what we used to call the Speed Hump Guidelines.
Yes, sir.
We've been working on getting those redone. Cory, is, I guess you're, you've got those completed, Cory?
I have one more.
Could, is it possible for us to meet, the Road Committee meeting, go over those the second Wednesday, like the meeting set up? If Debbie and, who I got, Debbie and Andrea?
Uh-huh.
I'll meet the second Wednesday for the Road Committee to go over that, the guidelines that we've redone. Basically, like we talked about, we took the side streets out of it and, you know, like we had the problem over on Keene Avenue. So I think the committee ordered me to go over those, and I'll try to get y'all, can we get a copy to Andrea and Debbie before the, before our meeting, or you'll send them?
At 5:00.
Good. Yes, the second Wednesday's at?
12th.
Yeah. June the 12th, second Wednesday at 5:00. And I'll get y'all the information to you.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay.
And where are we? Okay.
Joe?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Any other person like to bring anything that they would refer to as unfinished business that you'd like to bring back to the council tonight?
Mayor, I noticed in the last month's meetings, they talked about bringing a new ordinance up on Sumac Alley. That's in the minutes that I noticed reading them today. The minute said that the last paragraph, Mayor Blackass Beach, Craigmont City Attorney drafted a new ordinance for first reading with new footage. So I didn't know if that was anything that was going to be done according to the ordinance. It's in the minute, so I didn't know what.
I'll take your all's guidance on that. I frankly don't, I've been on vacation, but I didn't know.
Okay.
I don't remember John saying.
Well, it's in the minutes, and I just read it, so that's the reason I'm bringing it up.
Well, do you all want to reopen, you all want to open that back up again?
No, it doesn't.
Or just let it go?
It doesn't make any difference to me, I'm just, I'm just.
I mean, I don't want to introduce it unless the council, the legislative body wants to do it. If you all want to open it up, we can.
No, last.
We can just let it die on the vine.
The last I heard, actually, the last I heard, if I remember correct, was the La Grange Utilities and Mr. Smith was going to try to come to an agreement or something on it. That's what last I heard, I think. So I don't know. It doesn't make any difference, I'm just.
I thought they were just going to close the back part on the, not the alley going down, they were going to cut through to the Cedar Court Apartments, that area right there.
That's what Councilman Kramer put in this, under. That's what Councilman Kramer put in this, under this, in the minutes.
Kamer.
Kamer.
That's funny.
Kamer, I'm sorry.
Thank you, that's okay.
Yeah.
That was the last thing we did talk about, was the gentleman in the second half of the first half wanted his part closed, so.
But, you know, I don't, I don't know what's going to happen on it and it doesn't matter at this point, I don't guess, but, you know, if he, I don't know if they ever decided if they wanted to put asphalt down or how far back that it's, this is what my concern was, was the footage, you know, in there, if, if it's going to be asphalt, if somebody's going to do asphalt on it, or if it was any kind of agreement, how far back or how many feet they're going to go back there and do it, so, you know, so, I'm just, I'm just following up on the minutes, that's all.
Right. My recollection of what happened, my recollection of what happened at the last meeting was that there was no, I mean, I prepared a pretty detailed agreement in which they would split it and then they couldn't, the parties could not agree on it.
Okay.
Therefore, Mr. Smith rescinded his rescission of his retraction. I think that said that right.
Yeah.
Anyway, so it was a triple negative, so we're back to being, no, no closing, unless you want to go back and close the, the back half of it, if there's some compelling reason to do that, but somebody's going to have to pay the engineer to redraw his plans for the third time, and I think that would probably be going against Ted's budget, so, you're not paying for that? Who's paying that guy?
At this time, I think Sumac Alley is, is where it's at.
It's an issue.
And, and it's, we're gonna, we're gonna probably, the city, since it's a city alley, we will probably improve the alley to get, and work with Ted and the Utility Commission to see perhaps, are they going to actually need the alley itself to move people in and out of the Utility Commission in their renovation or in your outlet process, Ted and Roy, or if not, we leave the alley as it is. If it, if it is needed, then the city will deal with it and pave it and make it a nice entrance way for the people to come and pay their water bills and get in and out of there. So, we can work on that together, correct? Okay. Okay, Joe, that's, that's where we are on that.
Okay, on the other unfinished business, I had brought up the ordinance last month that seemed like nobody knew anything about, that there's an ordinance under the LaGrange Utilities that all property that LaGrange Utilities has is supposed to be in their name. So, you know, we understand it's in all of it, but one piece of property is in the city's name, and I had brought that up and, and I just.
Yeah, I don't think you need an ordinance here, I think you'll just make a motion and that property could be quit claimed from the city to, over to the, you know, to comply with the ordinance, it's, like, you're correct, it is supposed to be in the name of the, of the Utility Commission. I, I don't think it, whoever drafted it the first time apparently hadn't read that ordinance or that ordinance has been changed, whatever, since then, I'm not sure when.
Well, they, they've only got, the last piece of property I think they purchased is in their name. I don't know, but the rest of it is not, so I didn't know, I'm just not sure how, I guess my problem is, I'm not sure how they can, they pay everything and, and, you know, I mean, I know we have the board, we appoint the board, but still, if it's, if it's city property, it's in the city's name, to me, looks, looks me like they ought to be leasing the property from the city and the city taking care of the property, or, or, you know, they're, they're paying, they paid for the property, they paid to have it remodeled and.
The Works Department doesn't do that, and they're having theirs remodeled and that is still in, in the city's name.
I'm sorry?
The Works Department is building a new building and it's, the property down there is in the city's name.
The, the Works Department is in their budget, actually, there's a big difference. They're not in their budget, they even pay us for their own insurance, so that's, you're, you're not comparing apples to apples. I'm sorry, but you're not.
I think we are.
I can say, as part of this discussion, so this is why the Buildings Budget Finance and Utilities Committee started trying to take into account all of the property. We did notice that some of the, the properties listed as far as ownership, I don't want to say were questionable, but maybe were a little inconsistent, so I would just ask that you let that committee continue to look at that, to kind of bring everything in line.
Do we have a, Mayor, do we have a depreciation report on the city properties? Do we depreciate?
Yeah, the auditors do in their audit report.
Is it in the audit report?
Yes.
Okay.
But, I'm going to say, the way I look at it, I said it previously, unless it's a depreciation issue within the operation of the Utility Commission and the auditors say that, that house needs to be treated, the way I look at this, unless I'm told differently, we're all in this whole thing together, and what's the city, what's utilities, we're in this together. Now, if they want to claim that the sewer plant's theirs, then I'm not going to encroach on their area, I understand that's where they operate a sewer plant, but by it being in the name of City LaGrange, I say they can't sell it, because we say they can't, they can't trade it, because we say we can't. The only person I think that could dispose of everything is this city council, for whatever reason. I said it a few weeks ago, if we decide, I may be wrong, but we decide we don't, we don't want a utility commission, we want someone else to do it on a contractual basis, I'm sure this city council will decide that.
Sure.
I don't know why we need to worry about who owns what, we're in this whole matter together, and to sit here and argue over what they own and what we don't own, we shouldn't own, then I don't know why we have to worry about that, unless it makes a difference to the auditors and how they report it in a financial audit based on depreciation of assets. So.
Well, LaGrange Utilities depreciates it also, so if they're depreciating it and we're depreciating it, I think we have a problem, so I don't know.
They've got a separate complete audit that's done and performed by the auditors, period. The same people does our audit, does a different audit of the Utility Commission.
I understand that.
So, that's the way I see it as of this moment, until someone.
I'm like, I'm like Mr. Lamb line is, I just want to keep us legal, okay?
Sure. Well, if we're illegal, we've been illegal for the last fifty years on how we've operated, so, but a lot of these properties that Trey's talking about came back in the name of City LaGrange, that's what they come back as. So, that's where we are, Joe, okay? And we can continue to discuss it, but, excuse me, you got to come up here, please.
The, the only thing I can figure.
Tell us your name, Roy, and who, what you're about, I mean, who you're with.
Chairman of the Utilities Commission.
There you go.
The, in the past, and I'm going way back, things were, I don't know, I, I wasn't in a position where I was the one making decisions, they always said it had to be in the city's name. In the eighties, the ordinance was rewritten because the Utility Commission was dissolved by the city council and then reorganized again, and it, don't hold me on the date, eighty-two or eighty-four. When it was, evidently, this was a change that was made and nobody ever picked up on it. I didn't realize it was in there and I've read it a number of times, that it said that the utilities is supposed to be in our name. Only from a legality standpoint isn't an issue. In the end, I know when we sold, for example, the city lakes, were in the city's name in nineteen seventy-something, when I first started to come, started to work. We sold that property, the city closed on it, the money went to the city, the city transferred that money to LaGrange Utilities. Now, same, I don't know if that's happened on anything else, I know the Public Works is on a property that was LaGrange Utilities, I don't know if we paid for it or not, I'd have to do some major research, but that was the old sewer plant, that was the sewer plant up to nineteen eighty-three. So, I, that's just a little history, other than this one comment we read in the ordinance, and it is an ordinance, that we're, it's supposed to be in our name, whether or not that's a legal thing or not, I, I don't even know if it can be changed. That, when you set up a commission, it was set up through a, a judge or something, I think, when it was re, redone, but I'm going way back and I don't have all the facts there, but I, I just wanted to give a little more insight into it.
Okay. What, what I will do, I will talk to our auditing company and I'd like to hear from them and see how they're treating the assets of the Utility Commission, and if in fact they need to be in the name of the Utility Commission and this council's okay with that, then I personally have a problem with that.
Yeah, I mean, if, we can ask him when he comes out, or y'all can when he comes to look at Charles, which would make it and keep us all, like I said, we've, one piece of property we put in our name, and I thought it just a fluke, it just happened, but when we found this piece in the ordinance and we, we've got a second piece since then, I, I, we were just wanting to be sure we were, were legal.
Sure.
Because anywhere we've owned, I mean, the Utilities, Utilities Commission was created in fifty-two, the utilities was started somewhere in the mid-thirties. Obviously, in the thirties, it was a city agency, just like Public Works.
Right.
And that may have been where it came, where it was in the names of the city, and maybe that just carried over. I'd never really go back and look in the original ordinance for the utilities to see if that same statement was in there or not, so, I really don't know for sure, but we were just trying to be sure we were on legal ground if something came up, and I don't know if anybody, might not make any difference. It's like you said, in the end, it would come back to the council to dispose of, and maybe there's some, you know, if they ever did away with the commission, it would probably have to go to some judge or something because of the way we're set up. It's actually different, that's all I'm just trying to clarify.
All right. Thank you for that information, Roy. Okay, I think there was still unfinished business, I believe, Joe. Anyone else on, any unfinished? Anyone on new business?
Can I ask Joe, Joe, you set up for us to meet on the twelfth of June?
Yes, sir, road, the road.
Tuesday?
I'm sorry?
I'm not going to be available. Can we do it Tuesday? That's okay in the Bay area?
I can do it Tuesday at five. That's one of the, did that work for you, Joe?
Yeah, Tues, Tuesday the, Tuesday the eleventh?
Yeah, thanks, I appreciate it.
No problem, thank you.
Okay, any new business, anyone like to bring up, just for a discussion purposes at all?
Have we mentioned, Mayor, have we missed anything about our city outing at the golf course?
I think, I think that's what Trey's wanting to do, right Trey?
Been attempting to several times, but we've talked about this other stuff.
Trey's going to introduce, announce that right now, Mayor.
I mean, Joe, you can, you're the, you're the committee chair, if you'd like, or?
No, I just wanted to bring it up that, you know, that, that the mayor requested a, a city day at the Eagle Creek Golf Course that, that the city owns, he just wanted to let people know what we did out there, you know, to show them the facility and, and they're going to have putt-putt golf, people can ride the carts and take the tour and all that, I'm going to be the chief chef on hot dogs and brats and if anybody wants to volunteer, I know I could probably need some help on the grill, but time we get, maybe we'll get a table set up and we have their mustard on it and their buns on it and I need to get soft drinks, I need to get.
And Johnny Elsie, you're singing, right? Are things?
Yeah, they're, they're in charge of the music. Trey's in charge of the, Trey's in charge of the fishing contest.
Yeah.
I'm going to be the cook, so if anybody wants to help out, and I'm going to, I'll have to get some water and I'm not going to fool with two liters in thing, I'm going to get, try to get canned drinks or something and ice them, so, we'll need plenty of help if anybody wants to volunteer to come out and help, so, Trey, you can take over.
Yeah, I don't think we've said the date yet, so the tentative date, and it's hopefully, the firm date is July thirteenth, so there's this awesome flyer that we just got today. The, the time, I know it says one o'clock, but it's, it starts at one-thirty, so just a slight adjustment there, but everything's free, so, like Joe said and Mayor have also said, it's to showcase one of our parks and to have a good time and celebrate, celebrate the city.
It's the week before Oldham County Day.
Correct.
The Saturday before Oldham County Day.
Okay, Joe and Trey, thanks so much. This is Tab the City Day, and the reason I feel like we pushed this out there is because we, we have a beautiful asset here in the City LaGrange, an eighteen-hole municipal golf course, that this city council stepped up and helped out in the recent months to improve all the sand traps. I've traveled the course in the last few days, the sand traps are absolutely beautiful. I'm even seeing golfers after the fact, and I talk to them about the course, they say the course is beautiful. This is an asset that the city residents own, and I want them to actually know what we have here, so, as it's been said, July thirteenth, starting about one-thirty, it's free golf to anybody who wants to come, certainly city residents. If they bring an out-of-town person, what we're trying to do is show them the asset and the beautiful course we have, and to drive up our green feed players, and this course is absolutely beautiful and something that I don't think the city knows a lot about the residents. Becca with our office is in charge of the social media, Amanda, be glad to talk to you about it and maybe take an ad out with your paper, with the old mirror, we're really pushing this, as Joe said, he's going to be in charge of the cooking, and you can't find a better cook than Joe Davenport, and we're going to have fishing contests, the Department of Fish and Wildlife have donated kits for the kids to come out and get a kit to fish, they're bringing sixty or seventy actually poles with them, putting contests, golfing, our music's going to start at one o'clock, Elsie Carter and myself are in charge of the music. We're starting out with a DJ at one and he's going to rock the place, and then we're going to come with another talent.
And we've also heard John Black sing, and he does quite well.
So, no, that's not me, but anyway, this is going to be a fun day, and I'm telling the people who watch this video, you're invited, we want you to be there, because you can play this beautiful course for nothing. It's absolutely on us, we've raised some money, got some donations to buy the food, and it's a great day, and hopefully, the paper will help us out with this, as will the social media, once we ramp this thing up. Becca has put a flower, flyer in front of everyone today about all of our city council people, so we're really trying to showcase our beautiful golf course. Thank you, guys, and the committee's working on this thus far, because we've had two committee meetings, we're going to make this a special day, we hope. Okay.
Next meeting's June the thirteenth.
Next meeting for that, for that.
For the city day is at Eagle Creek Golf Course, the June the thirteenth, so if any of the council wants to.
In the clubhouse.
So, please, all of y'all mark your calendars, we hope you can participate, you can help us, help us out with anything related to golf course. On announcements, I would like to ask the council if they would consider this. I take a vac, my vacation one week a year, and Karen, my wife, says we take it from late June, the twenty-seventh through July the fourth or fifth. That's when she has us scheduled for a one-week vacation, and she's saying she's going whether I go or not. What I'm asking the council to consider, would you consider having our next council meeting a week later on July the eighth instead of July the first? Because I will be out of town. If this council wants to have a meeting and you all decide who's going to preside, I'm okay with that.
Some moved.
Some moved what?
Moved what?
Some moved to have the meeting moved from in July till July the eighth.
Well, yeah, but I like to give everybody a chance.
From July first to July eighth.
So, that's when I need it to happen, and I would hold it a week later, it would be a special call meeting, so we have to be very specifically oriented on our discussionable items, but I think, once we get through all these budgets tonight, that I can scale this thing down to make sure that's what exactly we talk about on that special call meeting, which not would be a regular scheduled meeting.
Right.
So, is that okay with the council?
I'll just go on record as saying I can't make it that night, I have a surgery that day, so.
You have what?
I have a surgery that day, so, on the eighth, but you all might go right ahead, I just won't be able to be there. I have a surgery that day, so, on the eighth, but you all might go right ahead, I just won't be able to be there.
Well, I tell you what we'd do though, we'd be praying for you.
That's the same, that's the same night as, uh, the Ridge Utility Committee too.
Yeah, if they start four o'clock.
That's scheduled for midnight.
Yeah.
I mean, it'd be over by six-thirty, surely. Right? Is that okay with the council to make it a week later?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Okay with you, Mary?
Wish you a second.
Leslie?
Yep.
Okay, I think we're in agreement, so that's, that's good. Okay, uh, any other announcements, please? If you wanna speak to your citizens and your constituents, now's the opportunity to do it. I don't have anything else other to say.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to know if we can go into executive session?
Okay, and would you give the purpose for?
Uh, it's under KRS sixty-one eight-ten and it's deliberations on the future acquisition of sale of real property by a public agency, but only when publicity would be likely to affect the value of specific piece of property to be acquired for public use or sold to a public agency.
Okay, you made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mister counselor, is that a allowable position to go into a closed session for? Make sure you understood the purpose of that.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go into a closed session. I think we'll only be in there a very short time. I don't think it'd be a long one, so anyone wants to stay around, if, if in fact there's some, any decision made, it will be made out here in the public. But we need to discuss a small matter for just a short, short time, I, I believe. So, we have a motion, a second, all of us in favor of the motion, let me know if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
And want to oppose. Okay, we're gonna go this way just for a little bit and we'll be, uh, back shortly. Corey Rusnick, if you could, I'd like to have you in there, please. Yes, ma'am. What's that? Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
Helen, I'll see you tomorrow.
Hey, Heather, uh, put, put one of these in front of each council persons, once we cut out of here, just put them there, please. And give one to Amanda, please.
I think you oughta make the train go in the other way.
Wow.
Yeah, I like, I like the drawing, but I think it should go to the left, not into the right. But I don't have anything to say about it.
Yes, you do.
I'm not an elected official, I'm just a one, one man.
Okay, Beach, come on, let's keep working, so we can get back.
Yeah, I'm a sheriff, you know, it's funny.
There's a lot of cases, make sure everybody gets here.
And then you know the mother. When it did, but after you told me what you told me, I got that. I thought, you know, it was a explosion, it was something. And I thought it was just a life.
Yeah, I think, yeah, you have ways for it.
I don't know, nothing's ever. I know, maybe your voice doesn't. They didn't say for two days, they had. They in the back, I'm the cause of the toll. I don't know, and process. I didn't know you even had. No, it was things. Cause I heard twenties, when it happened. I thought twenty. I did too. Wasn't that how you went up those paying jobs? Doesn't have to be a child. I just took advantage. Yeah. Did she have much to say about you? Well, you should see what somebody...
The mom, no, the mom wasn't on the scene.
No, it's not. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I know the Christian church, but. Well, they knew something like that.
Well, there's a, I've seen a lot of pictures of this man.
Everything you wanted. Tell them what you...
I know, I think right now. He was too aggressive.
You asked me the question, probably goes to the, that's all sort of new.
This probably means one of these.
He said, all right, the longest one I know forever, he has the, the longest meeting.
That was one of the...
Scream like?
Yeah. Joe had the record for the shorts?
Yes, I was here for that. It was the best. Yeah. It'll never change. I will put it on record right now, I guarantee. I would not be surprised at all if we have the record.
I forget what it is, I think it's, uh, it's a lot. So, I think it's, what is it, please, please, I think it's there.
Yeah. Thirty years, yes. And so there's...
Oh, it's got a... Yeah, it's like, you see, it's got a plastic car. All the neighbors are like...
I know, you good. I don't know how you feel during the time. I don't know how you feel during the time. I'm warning all of that rock fight this time. I don't search for too much. Now I have to sleep. I've been trying to sleep.
I know I used to go wrong. Which I can understand. Two o'clock a day at the office.
Yeah, I thought I was. Yeah, one of my friends that we attacked in the corner, he went to the corner. I really. I was like, how did you know?
She was. I would tell you.
Yeah.
Not as weird as a big pumpkin. I knew last time he was talking with his daughter. Yeah.
Surprisingly, I did not. Those little balls.
Oh, boy.
Cry my sweeter. I slowed down.
Oh, my God.
You know, well, she tried to leave but keep the words down. I'm like, do not, don't you ever take him. And I was. You know, once we stop, then you can.
Did you ever find out what happened to watch dollars?
Night mouse is coming.
Yeah.
We're just chatting. Hi, Amanda. Nice to meet you.
Hi.
She is our faithful to come to every meeting. I don't know how she does it.
I'm I'm interested. John can keep you interested. If he go up there right now and talk about that mouse. He's one of these. Okay, yeah, he's down there. Oh, now he's going that way.
This is Tracy. Tracy, nice to meet you.
Sandy.
Every time you.
Just about.
Okay, I'll look for you.
Okay. I thank you. I love you first down.
Oh, you're very good. Thank you. I can see that. Yeah, we're frustrated. I just can't entertain your jokes. Look, I missed part of this story.
Yeah, from last time.
Yeah.
And then you know, they sometimes they can argue over. Is it daylight or dark? No, you know, whatever it is, when we walk out the door, we're gonna have to.
Figure it out when we get there.
Right, yeah. I love it.
Check it out. Yeah, 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 we'll have to do a story. Stunning. Yeah, my publisher. So, yeah. So, do you write? Yes, since we're such a small staff. It's a little bit of everything writing. Sorry, maybe not the paper, but. Well, that's exciting. Yeah. I've got to happy. A while. I'm from here. Oh, so you so you know the background stories too? Yeah. Yeah. Some, some.
Do you like it here?
Love it.
We love it.
Almost a year.
Oh.
Love it. But I'm still learning my way around. Everything is so different. That was like like the outskirts. Everything is different. So, I ask your neighbors.
I've been here all my life and I can remember just to say, let's go grab a hamburger.
Right.
Even always love St. Anthony's.
Really? Oh, my gosh.
And now, look, it will be where we're going now.
You go two blocks and we can have hamburger now. We still have people say they really have something else than what we have. They just don't know how how good we have it now.
They are.
When did that happen? Yeah, it's really, it's still so new. It's hard to get in. Oh, my gosh, it's hot. What is that? We've turned it twice.
You did.
All times.
Yeah, it must be time to go home.
Maybe you need to do early Sunday. And home next door.
Oh, yes. What have they got?
Well, we got Kevin, uh, we got a whole chicken. And we had it gone almost all the time we got home. It was so good. And we were, I'm just starting thinking it out. So, it's a roasted chicken that they, the spices are. And he is the, um. Albero. That's the one. Food truck that.
Right.
We had to use it. So, because he couldn't do the food truck still. He was supposed to come to the concert and just couldn't get away.
Hey, but it's chicken.
I've heard they have a good deal. I would say that too. Yeah.
How about, are they doing good?
Well, I've seen people sitting out here. And so, people will sit out in that. Pigeon tables, yeah. And they were dropping, they just got. First day I watched it. I was sitting there by the. And they were just sitting there and I realized that the. The note on the little speaker said, drop them some soon. So, I'm not really sure why they were sitting there, but I'm sitting right along with them. So, finally went back and it's working now, so you can drop through.
What language do you have? I've never been there and I wouldn't know how to call it. I had to. So, we can't go together.
Bossy. So, I don't. Can you imagine? I don't. This is a tough for me. You're bossing around and you're saying, do you? I'm good.
Then I tell you what, would you just go out and ride on the car?
That's what I think we should do.
Yeah.
Well, you can do that.
Yeah. Well, he well, he told me tonight I could have went, but maybe he had city council. Get up there.
Well, but on the thirteenth, you can do that.
Yeah, I'm gonna do it.
I'll cut that because you don't have to swing it. So, I can look at all that way. If I have to go like this. I know. Oh, I'm sure they have. Maybe that's what's. Mostly hard in the obvious. News about. My brain. I totally understand.
Well, they say we go get out of here, can you? Right. And you told me. So, they did. Well, it's twelve, it's twenty till ten.
I know. I hope that can be here until ten thirty.
And do you like your new job?
Me too.
You get me back in the hang of it?
Twenty years of change. I like you that.
Nice meeting you.
Yeah, I was. Okay.
I've heard a lot of.
Poor people, they get home. Who's sitting in the pool?
I'm actually moving.
Whatever happened to that boy that got shot? I don't know whatever happened. I don't know. We think John does good. No, I should run it without watching. No. She's saying.
Oh, yeah. Living out.
Well, they're. I bet you get some interesting places.
Uh, he didn't say really much, he like, he's. Trying to comment. They still, they're pretty good, probably, they get fifteen minutes to chew off. Took a lot of time. They would get a lot of shots.
But you know they go back when they go back strong. Keep going back some.
What do you get your nails done?
And, uh, off the white coat road.
They actually go to, I thought it was in those.
I bet your mom makes them, yes.
This is close there.
You know, I love that I'm in the yard. And, uh. Always.
I don't, they probably, I wouldn't.
I'm basically, maybe I'll even, I don't think I'm gonna stay there or not.
I would say. It's safer than here, if someone wanted to see.
This is really aggressive, right?
I worry about that, yeah, it's like, yeah, yeah, it's like, people are, you're careful, you're like, you're not, you're gonna fall, they're like, like, it could be, it's kind of impossible. They can like, always go to the chains and shops, and I was like, yeah, like, for my apartment, like, it was, um, a wall, it was, you know, down there.
Yeah, you don't, you don't.
You have to get paid.
Yeah, like me and Amanda almost went to sleep.
You almost went to sleep?
We, we thought that we didn't have to lie, you know.
See, I think if they're, see the train going that way?
Yeah.
They're gonna think, oh, it's over there, but if they say go this way.
But we think about it.
He should be able to, he's dyslexic, he can figure that out.
Nice, isn't it?
Okay, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to come out of executive session and come back into regular session.
I'll make that seconded.
Motion made by Councilperson Kammer, second by Joe Davenport, all those in favor of the motion, let me know by saying aye.
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 Is there any discussion on the matter?
Well, I'd like to make a motion. Uh, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we, we release the revisionary clause on a deed that was signed in January two thousand and three. Uh, deed number is D seven four three, and that's page two oh seven, and you can find that in the, um, county courthouse. And, uh, it is a property that is actually on Adams Street, and, uh, that is my motion.
Any, any economic development issues?
Because of, because of economic development, it's the correct thing to do.
Okay.
And are you, are you authorizing the, making a motion, authorize the mayor?
I'm authorizing the mayor to release that revisionary clause.
Okay.
Okay, a motion is, uh, proposed by Mayor Lamline, is there a second?
How second?
It has been a second, any discussion, any further discussion on the motion before the council? If not, all those in favor of the motion, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Actually, you're abstaining, aren't you?
Yes, I abstain.
You're abstaining?
Yes.
Okay, I thought you probably abstaining.
I'm sleepy.
Okay, okay. Um, let's see. Okay, thank you all, um.
I can make a motion to adjourn.
Before you do that, Trey, before you do that, Trey, uh, we did pass out while we're gone, a little rendering, and for those out in the audience, uh, if you haven't seen this rendering, I wanted the council to see this tonight. But this is a rendering that has been talked about, I think, for a number of years, as you come into La Grange, on a, the wall at, below the marathon station. Um, I would, this is a rendering designed by Prather Design, it's been talked about, I, I understand, for a year, two or three years. But, um, um, I just don't know if there's any comment about it, but this is what is being proposed, something along these lines, and being done there, and hopefully, um, you all will support this.
Looks great.
Um, Counselor Craig Mau, his opinion, what?
Counselor, oh, counsel.
Counselor Craig Mau, he, he almost felt the train need to be going the opposite direction, but still yet, um, that's, that's sort of where, where we are on that, and, um, um, hopefully, it's gonna come to fruition pretty soon, so just thought y'all would take a look at it, and certainly welcome and comment on it later date, I think the newspaper has a copy of it, so. Otherwise, uh, at this point, we have a motion to adjourn by Trey Kammer, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Debbie Pollard, all those in favor of the motion, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.